Sealer of Weights and Measures, Tracy Cleveland. To go to the podium with, we have two guests. We have Jesse Raymer from Napa Valley Ventners and Bruce Bartisono from the Farm Bureau that are going to be here on behalf of the agricultural community accepting our proclamation of National Agricultural Month, March 2023. And I'm going to read some just really, I think, very salient points for Napa County in regards to this and some of our recitals. And one of them is, whereas Napa County has more than 1,800 farms cultivating more than 46,000 acres of farmland resulting in an ag production value of over $745 million in 2021. I think that that's really one of the things, you know, when you look at our county seal, you see agriculture. When you look out into our hillside, when you look into our valley, you see agriculture. And for us, you know, we know that long ago with the passage of the Ag Preserve and subsequent[71.70][71.73]initiatives and measures, that agriculture has been deemed the highest and best use of our land. And so, in recognition of National Agricultural Month, I will now say, therefore be proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, the County of Napa, State of California, on this 28th day of March 2023, does hereby recognize March as National Agricultural Month in Napa County. We shall celebrate, honor, and promote the value of agriculture and the agricultural workforce in the county of Napa. Thank you.
Excellent. Can I say just a thank you to Chair Ramos and members of the board for acknowledging and celebrating National Ag Month and acknowledging the incredibly important work that our farmers, our ranchers, our farm workers, really anybody that's involved in agriculture in Napa, and acknowledging that impact on our communities. Agriculture supports the economy in Napa by providing jobs and driving tourism. Visitors come to Napa to have the wine experience, but they also get an opportunity to learn about the land, to learn about our diverse soils, our incredible microclimates, you know, the unique weather patterns. So everything that kind of drives this destination as a world-class ag destination. Farmers feed our communities, they feed our worlds, and farmers have this additional responsibility, which is incredibly important, of being stewards of the land. So despite facing significant challenges like wildfire, like lack of water, drought, labor shortages, pandemic, they persevere and they find a way to meet those challenges with passion and integrity. So I just, I'm honored to have this small role in agriculture, in particular in Napa County, and I appreciate, you know, you celebrating with us. So thank you.
Thank you. And now I would invite our guests to come and we're, I'll present the proclamation. And if you have any words that you want to add, please.
Do you want to step forward?
Yeah, go ahead and share if you have any words to share on behalf of your organizations. I think an introduction would be great.
Sure, Jesse Raymer, Napa Valley Ventners. We appreciate the partnership that the county is working with our local producers, our growers, our ventners. Farming's not easy. Making wine and selling wine is also not easy, and neither is governing responsibly. So thank you for your ongoing support and protection of our livelihoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we also have Mr. Bartisono, a director from the Napa County Farm Bureau.
Well, this is unexpected. Well, on behalf of the Farm Bureau, it's nice to be recognized. And, you know, we enjoy being a big part of this community, and we have a long history here in the valley, and we're looking forward to working with you all and the Mera's community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation, a proclamation to Tracy Lamb, Executive Director of NEWS, Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services, declaring April 23 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Napa County. As we all know, we are very familiar with the acronym NEWS. If you would, Ms. Lamb, please step to the podium. We are very, NEWS is synonymous with being a safe haven in Napa County. And we honor the work that your organization does, not just in April, and not in, just in those times where you rise in notoriety because of events that have happened, but really on a day-to-day basis, and being able to provide a new foundation and a new start for so many families. And so, I want to take a couple of moments to honor the work that you have done and where the beginnings are, and to read a few portions of this proclamation. The first one being, whereas NEWS, Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services, is commemorating 41 years of service to survivors of domestic violence and sexual abuse in Napa County, and having opened as the county's rape crisis center in 2010 to provide safety to those experiencing sexual abuse. And whereas in fiscal year 2122, NEWS provided services to over 1,700 of our Napa County community members, of which 232 were survivors of sexual abuse, and half of those were minors, including 24-hour response and crisis intervention, financial aid and advocacy, accompaniment and assistance of civil and criminal justice proceedings, referrals and support, completing victim compensation applications. The NEWS helpline received 3,197 calls for assistance. You know, I think that that really exemplifies the significance of your organization, helping people at a very vulnerable point in their lives, and being able to be a partner into a new journey, into a new foundation of safety and health overall. So we want to thank you. Now, therefore be proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 28th day of March 2023, does hereby join NEWS, advocates, and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. We do by here proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Napa County, and we ask the community to join in their effort, not only in April, but all year long, to be part of the effort to end sexual violence. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Lamb, I want to thank you for your organization's contributions and for your partnership to be able to provide for our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Ramos, and to all the members of the Board of Supervisors. And I'd like to invite our Board President, Dennis Krymeier, to come up and join me, if that's okay?
Yes.
It's difficult to talk about sexual abuse, and unfortunately, it's all too common. One in three children are victims of some form of sexual abuse or domestic violence before they reach the age of 18. And unfortunately, a lot of the clients that we're dealing with are children who are much younger than you would expect to have to deal with these kinds of situations. I really want to give credit to the staff of NEWS who do this 24/7. They respond to the hospital, they respond to our local Courage Center to be there for families who are experiencing this type of trauma. I just wanted to highlight, there's a lot, there are a lot of events that will be going on this month. And one, for instance, is that there's a taco truck that will be featuring teal-colored tacos with a theme called Taco about it, because sexual abuse is a hard thing to talk about. And then at the end of the month, on the 29th, in collaboration with the District Attorney's Office and others in the community, we'll be having a big event at the vet's home called Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. And so, anyone, but particularly men, who want to get involved in this effort, can come and, on a pair of red pumps, and walk for a mile. And it's kind of a fun way to talk about a difficult topic, and to bring people together to think about the fact that this is happening. I just wanted to highlight one activity. We are working with Cope Family Center. They brought as a part of Child Abuse Prevention Council, a speaker to the community, Cory Jensen, Cory Jewel Jensen, who's been working with offenders, sexual abuse offenders, for many years. And the work that she does is to work with families to understand how predators think and to prevent those things from happening in the future. So we'll be going and talking to parents in schools as part of a collaborative effort with the District Attorney's Office and law enforcement, along with NEWS staff, to just make people aware that this is something that can be prevented if you are alert and know what to look for. So thank you so much for this recognition. And I want to tell the next speaker.
Chair Ramos and the members of the board, I just want to thank you for all the support that you give to NEWS. I know that we get a lot of financial support through grants, and that really helps our programs. And I also want to thank the staff on all that they do. Really, they experience secondary trauma every day when they help these people that are at their, the most horrible time in their life. And actually, I think it really, I don't want to celebrate this month anymore. I want to celebrate I feel safe walking through a parking structure at night month. I want to celebrate I feel safe leaving a restaurant late at night and going to my car month. I want to celebrate I feel safe sending my daughter off to college to stay in a dorm month. So I want to celebrate Healthy Relations, Relationship Month. So thank you for your support, and maybe down the road, we won't need NEWS anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, please proceed, and I'll go ahead and give this photo up.
I'd like to thank the Napa Valley Ventners, too, for their support. Thank you.
We've had so many attendees of our Emeritus category lately. I think I'm going to start a sign-in visitor log in the back of the room to commemorate the occasion. Thank you so much. Next, we will move on to Department Head Reports and Announcements. And for this next one, actually, I'm going to invite the sheriff to come on up. We've had two deputies, Deputy James Hartley and Deputy Joseph Chivoni, who were honored in really what is a remarkable award. Two deputies from our county were honored as Officer of the Year by the California Boating Safety Officers Association out of 58 counties. And really, that is remarkable. The circumstances under which they received this recognition is remarkable, and I wanted to give the sheriff an opportunity to share more about Deputies Hartley and Chivoni.
Thank you, Chair Ramos, members of the board, members of the public. Yes, last week in Santa Barbara, California, the California Boating Safety Officers Association had their annual event. At their annual event, they typically award one Officer of the Year, and this is a state award for the whole state, as you mentioned. This year's, this last week's event was a little bit different because they did award two deputies, both of them Napa County sheriffs, deputies, that were, on August 7th of last year, doing their job on a boat, patrolling waters of Lake Berriessa. You know, California boating and waterways and safety is an important mission for the sheriff's office. We receive funding from the state Boating and Waterways Division for, to provide that kind of safety and boating enforcement up at the lake, a very recreational area for folks from around Northern California and around the state. So on August 7th, Deputy Hartley and Deputy Chivoni were doubled up on a boat. They noticed some people recreating on the lake, jumping, and they saw two people jump in off the boat, jump into the water, one person come out. So recognizing that something didn't look right, they sped their boat over to where that boat was, where that swimming activity was. As they're speeding there in their patrol boat, Deputy Hartley peeled off the heavy equipment that he was wearing, gun belt, boots, things that would weigh him down, and like something you would see in a action movie. He dove into the water. He's a good athlete. He's a member of our dive team. And he dove in and about, under about 10 feet of water, with some good skills and really some good luck, he did find the patient underwater, brought him up to the surface, brought him onto the boat, the patrol boat, where he and Deputy Chivoni immediately started CPR, because there was no breathing and no pulse. As they performed CPR, they brought the patient to paramedics on the shore, and really saved that patient's life. The patient lived as a result of their heroic actions. So I think that's why the exception was made this year, and there was two Officers of the Year award. And this is something we've seen in recent years, from our deputies, some lifesaving efforts up at the lake. And in addition to the more negative thing for the public, where, you know, they receive a ticket for a boating infraction and moving violation on the water, they're there to do more than that. They're really there to keep our visitors and our residents safe when they're recreating on the lake. So thank you for the opportunity to report out on that.
Thank you so much, Sheriff Ortiz. And I think it's, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, if you would, please extend our congratulations to Deputy Hartley, Deputy Chivoni on the award, but our gratitude, because that type of service, which is in service and for others, placing themselves in peril to be able to save this person's life, it's not a one-off occasion that our deputies are doing this to save lives. And so, we are honored that we get to count them part of the Napa County family. So please extend our gratitude.
Will do. Thank you again.
Thank you. We do not have any other Department Head Reports or announcements. We will move on to our consent items for special districts. We have one matter for our consideration, and that is the Napa Resort Improvement District. I will ask for public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for consideration.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Gregory, second by Supervisor Catrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move on to our consent items. We do have a correction memo on 7G, which was a simple typographical correction on the budget unit on 7G. I will now take public comment on consent items. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and direction. What is your wish?
I'll move the consent calendar. A second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Catrell, which I assume will entail the correction memo.
And the correction.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is for all matters not listed on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and our special districts. Public comment is limited to three minutes. If you're here to make a public comment, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And now, we will move on to our administrative items. And the first up for special districts is the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Our interim Director of Planning, Building, and Environmental Services requests the Board of Directors of the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency to receive our annual report of Water Year 2022. And we have Ms. Jamison Crosby with us to introduce this item. We will also be asked, we will also receive a summary of the GSA Technical Advisory Group's key 2022 discussion topics, and we will be asked to approve the submittal of the annual report to the Department of Water Resources. Ms. Crosby.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, you basically did my introduction for me. Thank you. That was tidy. Yes, I'm Jamison Crosby, Natural Resources Conservation Manager in the Planning Department. My colleague, Vitsy Vicky Kretzinger-Graebert, from Ludarv Scammoning and Consulting Engineers, and I are here this morning to give you a presentation on the status of the groundwater, the Napa Valley sub-basin as of Water Year 2022, which is the year that ended September 30th of 2022. So this is kind of always our standard practice. The water year ends, and about six months later, we deliver the annual report, and it's due to the state on April 1st. Chair Ramos, as you said, that's the primary purpose of our meeting this morning, but we'd also like you to, on your own time, at your leisure, take a look at the summary of the, our technical advisory group's discussion topics. These are the topics that they kind of mulled over, the questions that we posed to them. They mulled over and kind of prepared a set of responses to those. These are compiled from the meetings of September, October, November of last year. We'd like you to take a look at those, review, read them, and we'll return at your invitation to discuss at greater length. And there will be more questions that we pose at the tag in the months coming, but we'd like you to at least review these first. We don't have to get into a discussion of them today, but wanted to bring them forward. And as you said, just get your approval of our submittal of the annual report to DWR. So with that, yeah, I'd like to introduce Vicky Kretzinger-Graebert. You all know her very well.
Good morning, Chair Ramos and supervisors. Pleased to be here this morning to give you a brief overview of the annual report for Water Year 2022. So I'm going to hit on a few key topics. The Napa County and climate change that's been occurring in extremes, countywide and sub-basin monitoring. There's highlights of the sub-basin water budget results for the year and years prior. And then we have sustainable management criteria and quantitative metrics, and then ending with response actions, things underway as part of the GSP implementation, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan implementation. And to start off with, we had good news in January this year, a year after having received your approval to submit the Groundwater Sustainability Plan to the Department of Water Resources, and the department sent a letter of approval of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. There are three, what's referred to as corrective actions, and these are for consideration as part of the five-year update in 2027. So nothing immediately. One example of those actions is, the department is currently working on a guidance document related to interconnected surface water. And when that guidance is developed and distributed, then they're asking groundwater sustainability agencies to consider that guidance. So for the Water Year 2022 that we're focused on, that extends from October 1st, 2021, to September 30th, 2022. But it's also really important that we look at what happened in years prior, especially the very dry years of 2020 and 2021. Water Year 2022 was classified as a normal but below-average year, and it was really anything but normal in the pattern of precipitation that occurred. Most of that precipitation was in fall of 2021, followed by very little precipitation in winter, January to March of 2022, and even less precipitation after that. So one of the things that's of interest is the U.S. Drought Monitor, which is tracked by county, including Napa County. And what I wanted to point out here was the increasing frequency of very dry years, hotter, drier years, designated as various levels of drought. So from 2012 to current, we've had mostly dry years, drought ranging from severe to exceptional primarily, with few wet years interspersed amongst those very dry years. And this is important in terms of overall conditions. I know it's hard today, as we're being pounded by another atmospheric river, but it's really important to look at the long view. One of the things that's integral to managing water resources in the county and elsewhere in the state is monitoring. And during the development of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, nine monitoring networks were established. These cover a wide range of parameters being tracked. You've heard previously a lot about groundwater levels, both countywide and focused on the sub-basin, but there are a number of other criteria, looking at stream flow and quality and land subsidence and seawater intrusion, a whole host of things. So this table is included in the annual report as part of the executive summary and the body of the report. The monitoring is all GSP compliant to date. This doesn't mean that this stops here. This is a very dynamic process. The monitoring wells are being added as we speak, or so to speak, when it's dry again. And more monitoring will be recommended as part of the work plans that are underway. One of the things that we've shown over the years is hydrographs, groundwater levels, time series for the Napa Valley sub-basin. There are three shown here on this slide, extending from St. Helena down to Napa City area. And in the past, over decades, we've seen generally stable conditions, you know, spring-fall measurements, and then those years when it's drier, responding to that, those drier years, and then replenishing following those dry years. But the thing that we're pointing out here with these circled, you know, times in the last few years, is the much greater response to the very dry year effects and the drought conditions. We've seen more pronounced fluctuations, and we've seen declining groundwater levels. Another area that is largely outside of the sub-basin, but still highly important, is the Millikan Sarko-Toluca area, down in the southeast part of the county. And here, we look at a few wells as examples of what goes on in that area in the way of groundwater conditions. Historically, it's been extremely well-recognized and studied about historical groundwater declines, up until about 2009. And then, in response to actions taken by the county in 1990, groundwater levels stabilized by about 2009 till 2020. But then again, we've circled what's going on in these very dry years more recently. And even though we had seen stabilized conditions, we're again seeing declining groundwater levels in the MST. Another area that's of particular focus in all of the monitoring being conducted, especially in the Napa Valley sub-basin, is surface water and groundwater interaction. The county benefited from grant funds provided by DWR in 2014. So this was pre-adoption of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act by the state. And these, there are five sites where there are paired groundwater monitoring facilities and also stream gauging. And at each of these groundwater monitoring locations, there's a nested or paired set of wells, one shallower and one deeper. We monitor on a more or less continuous basis, level, groundwater levels and groundwater quality, and also stream flow quality and stream stage. So this represents that these dedicated facilities, more than eight years of data. This is an example, you know, looking at one of these sites, Site 5 in St. Helena. On the right-hand side of the slide, it shows an example of what I mean by these nested or paired wells. They are constructed within the same borehole, just inches apart. They're isolated with seals, but that allows us to monitor what's going on in different parts of the groundwater system, at shallower depths of 40 to 50 feet or so, and at somewhat deeper depths, but still pretty shallow at about 80 to 100 feet. Another thing that I wanted to point out before we move to the next slide is, on the map, we see the river monitoring, and then about 200 feet away from the river monitoring is the, are the groundwater monitoring wells. And then about 100 feet from this, these paired groundwater monitoring wells is an active supply well. So this is, again, Site 5, and we have a number of things going on in this slide. On the left-hand side, we have some schematics. These are provided through nature conservancy to demonstrate the kinds of interaction that can occur within a sub-basin. And it turns out that all of these things actually occur at Site 5 in St. Helena. It just depends on the time of year as to when, you know, what is occurring. So one of those things is the discharge of groundwater to the stream system. It provides base flow to the Napa River system. That's A. And then under B, we illustrate groundwater pumping locally and also regionally, does have an effect on the Napa River system, the stream flow depletion. And at C, we also show what happens in the summer to earlier fall months, where we have a discon- a disconnect between the bottom of the stream system and the groundwater. So there's unsaturated material between those two bodies. So as we look at the right side, this is an example of all this data that we've collected over the last eight years. And I know it's pretty busy, but I'll try and point out a couple of key things. So the green line is showing what's happening with groundwater levels in the shallow monitoring well. And the blue line, you can barely see because it tracks exactly or mirrors what's going on with the shallow monitoring well, that's the river. So when there are storm events, both of those respond similarly to those precipitation events. And then when we look at the deeper monitoring well that's shown in purple, we see other things. We see that it, it does not mirror, it doesn't follow the same course as the shallow monitoring well or the river. There's a much greater separation of water levels between the shallow and the deep wells. We also see a lot of noise. So we see that purple line going up and down, up and down, up and down, and that's in response to the nearby pumping 100 feet away. But we also see that deeper groundwater levels over time, you know, in the fall, and that's part of a regional response. One of the other things that we see when we look at that black dashed line, that represents the stream bed elevation. And we see a point in time where there's no blue line that follows that. So that means there's dry reaches during, at this location, during the summer to fall, early fall months. And what we especially saw during 2020 and 2021, those very dry years, we saw an extended duration of that dry reach. So that drought effect, you know, had an impact. So one of the things that we're currently underway doing, we started to install new monitoring wells in January to February. Those were at two sites on the north end of the image on the right. And at both of those locations are these paired monitoring wells, similar to what I just described. Then we had rains, so the drilling contractor needed to demobilize and we're waiting for site access to improve, and then they'll return and, and construct monitoring wells at two other sites. So altogether, there will be eight new monitoring wells. One of the things that was developed during the preparation of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan was the Napa Valley Integrated Hydrologic Flow Model. It's a mouthful, but it's a really important modeling tool that allows us to track very complex computations over time historically, but also at the time 50 years into the future to look at climate change effects. So this model domain covers that area that's shown by the rectangular purple outline, the purple box. Inside of that, we encompass the Napa, the upper Napa River watershed. And the modeling that's done in that part of the processing accounts for watershed processes, and those feed, those results feed into what's going on in computations for the lower part of the model that covers the Napa Valley floor, the Millikan Sarko-Toluca area, and also the lowlands out to San Pablo Bay. The model was updated through water year 2022 climate in order to use this information for the annual report. And there are other model updates that will be conducted this year. So some highlights from the annual report include total water use for the water year 2022. Altogether, there's a little over 40,000 acre-feet of water used. A large part of that is groundwater pumping by all sectors. That was 18,000, about 800 acre-feet in the year. We also account for native vegetation and wetlands and groundwater-dependent ecosystems and their use. That was a little over 6,000. Recycled water use as a supplemental water supply is important. It's growing, and in water year 2022 is about 1,200 acre-feet. Surface water is also an important part of the supply, both from reservoirs local, locally, and also surface water diversions and the state water project. Altogether, those are about 14,000 acre-feet. When we look at groundwater pumping by sector, so take that 18,800 acre-feet and break it down by, you know, who's doing what pumping. Agriculture is the largest user, so that's about a little over 14,000 acre-feet and about 76% of the use. The smallest user is municipal uses at 450 acre-feet, or about just 2% of the use. This is a busy graph, contains a lot of information altogether to look at groundwater pumping over time, the total water use over time. We really want to know what's going on in the subsurface. How is groundwater underneath the sub-basin footprint? How are we using that, and is it in balance or is it not? And what does that look like cumulatively? We want to know not just year to year, but over a longer period of time. So the thin green line on here is total water use. That's actually stayed pretty close to similar over the years, a little bit of up and down. On the thin blue line over time, that's the total pumping, and we see that that's been increasing slightly since about 2014, not unexpectedly, in response to very, very dry years that I mentioned earlier as part of the drought monitor, hotter, drier conditions. So we have wet years interspersed between, but overall, we see some increase. On the purple bars, those represent the groundwater storage, where some years above that zero off to the far left, that's the volume of groundwater that's changing year to year. When we have bars that extend above that zero line, we have an increase in storage, and bars below it are a decrease in storage for that year. So what I mean by this is when we look to the past, you know, two very dry years, the water years 2020, 2021, we see those very deep purple bars, meaning there was a lot of groundwater that was taken out of storage in those years. We also see in 2022, that purple bar extends above the purple line. That means when we look from the end of 2021 to 2022, we saw some replenishment because of those rains in October to December 2021. But that replenishment wasn't enough to replenish the total amount of groundwater in storage in the sub-basin. So we see that by that gray line, that's the cumulative depletion of groundwater in storage. That was at its lowest point in 2021. It's bounced up some in 2022, but we still are below, you know, that zero balance line where we want to hover about to be in, in balance over the long term. So one of the things that's really important for the GSP is tracking six sustainability indicators. These are used to avoid causing undesirable results. So that means avoiding significant and unreasonable lowering of groundwater levels, reducing groundwater storage, you know, avoiding seawater intrusion, avoiding water quality degradation, avoiding land subsidence, and most of all, especially in Napa Valley sub-basin, is the depletion of surface water. So the Napa Valley sub-basin is particularly sensitive to this sustainability indicator. That means that that amount of groundwater in storage that I just referred to, it doesn't need to change much in order to create a disconnect between surface water and groundwater. And that creates a, a trigger and, and something that we don't want to happen. So I'm going to cover in the next few slides, what's going on with a few of these sustainability indicators that are really the barometer for what's happened in response to the very dry years, you know, followed by our normal below-average year, but still very much a drought year. So nearly 24 of the sites measured to track sustainability had exceedances of the minimum threshold. That means they were exceeding this definition that we didn't want to exceed. That's not yet an undesirable result, but it is a, a trigger that we don't want to trip. We also had a number of these wells that had three consecutive fall exceedances. So in this case, for this particular sustainability indicator, we don't have an undesirable result, but we definitely have cautions because of the exceedances of minimum thresholds and also triggers. But when we turn to interconnected surface water, this sustainability indicator, here we do have a concern. So we have two of these sites where criteria are tracked quantitatively by levels and by volume. And here on this slide, I'm just talking about the levels. We had minimum threshold exceedances at both the Yountville site and the Oak Knoll site shown on the image on the right. But we also had at the Yountville site, three consecutive times when we exceeded these minimum threshold levels. So in this case, for this sustainability indicator, we do have an undesirable result. And this is something that we want to take action on, and we do want to try to avoid. We also have another sustainability indicator, reduction of groundwater in storage. And this looks at what occurs over time with the amount of groundwater in storage. And the way that we evaluate this is also by looking at groundwater extraction occurring over a seven-year period, and then averaging those seven years together in order to know what we did in average over that time. So in this case, we have seven years where the average estimated pumping was 18,000 acre-feet. This is all sectors of pumping, and this exceeds the sustainable yield that was estimated in the Groundwater Sustainability Plan of 15,000 acre-feet per year. So that means that this also is tripping our undesirable result definition, something that we also want to address. So in summary, we have two undesirable results that have occurred, one for the depletion of interconnected surface water, and that applies to any water year type. And we also had an undesirable result for the reduction in groundwater storage, both for the current water year 2022 that this annual report is about, and also last year. We didn't have other undesirable results for the other indicators. Now, these undesirable results, they must be addressed by at least 2042, but the Groundwater Sustainability Plan makes a point of describing an adaptive management action process and taking action in order to become resilient and sustainable long before 2042. And that's part of the reason that this board approved the formation of the Technical Advisory Group, to help inform, you know, what response actions are warranted and, and what those might be. So in summary, for the overall annual report, in the sub-basin, we've seen groundwater level declines in response to drought, and also that drought means a lack of recharge, and that lack of recharge also relates to some increased pumping. We had some replenishment because of the fall rains in October to December 2021, the beginning of water year 2022, but we still didn't have enough to replenish the sub-basin. So we had two undesirable results occur, interconnected surface water and reduction of groundwater storage. In the MST area, we've seen historically the groundwater level declines, and then we saw that those were moderated by things that the county and took action on back in 1990 and forward. But now we have these very dry years, hotter, drier effects and continuing drought that occurred in 2020, 21, and 22, and we see the response to that in groundwater level declines. So response actions, that's part of what the Groundwater Sustainability Plan calls for. So what does that mean? Well, in the very near term, and part of the framing questions that you have as part of the package today, it describes the importance of outreach and education, and that is particularly focused on drought conditions, you know, not to get too complacent about what's happening in the recent months, but to recognize that we've got a longer situation on our hands. So also climate change and water conservation measures. In the short term, we've got four work plans going on in parallel. One is in the final stretches and, and being finalized, that's the Stormwater Resource Plan. There are also three others being worked on, the Napa County Vineyard and Winery Water Conservation Work Plan, the Groundwater Pumping Reduction Work Plan, and the Interconnected Surface Water and Groundwater Dependent Ecosystems Work Plan. Those are involving a lot of collaboration with a lot of different folks, including the Napa Valley Grape Growers Organization, the Napa County Wine Growers Organization, the Napa County Farm Bureau, the Napa County Resources Conservation District, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, NOAA, National Marine Fisheries Services, and I'm probably forgetting some of it, a whole bunch of different entities. And then in the midterm, we would look ahead to implementing these work plans and also identifying potential recharge sites and whether or not those sites would allow for some mitigation in the future for specific drought condition effects. So a lot's been happening since this board approved the GSP. A year ago, January, implementation immediately started with the formation of the advisory group, followed by an annual report, and a couple months later, and now followed by this annual report, and then the four work plans. There's also been many conversations about trying to refine water use data, both with Open ET, it's a spatial satellite dataset, and also in conjunction with local land-based sensors. This is something we're actively working on with a number of those groups that I just mentioned. There's also the additional monitoring well installation and other monitoring sites being evaluated in addition to those monitoring wells, and also coordination with the RCD on the Stream Watch Monitoring Program, the evaluation of recharge areas, ongoing outreach, which will ramp up again soon, and also coordination with Napa County on the drought and water shortage efforts. So as we are on, coming about with a succession of, of many atmospheric rivers, you know, in the recent months, we are experiencing another one now, today, this week, and we're, this is all on the heels of these exceptional to, you know, beyond drought defects. But we want to maintain a balance and, and address these uncertain weather extremes. So conservation is essentially becoming a way of life in Napa County. It doesn't matter what kind of water year type it is, drought or deluge, you know, it's very important for the county, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, the community, everyone work together to achieve the vision that has been set forth in the county for such a treasured place. So this means for Napa Valley sub-basin, it does respond to extremes. It's different than the San Joaquin Valley. The, there's pluses and minuses about that. The pluses are that wetter years do provide replenishment. We do expect to see replenishment after all this rain that we've been experiencing. But these uncertain times and the drought years and the lack of recharge, they do affect the river system. So altogether, it needs attention. So future water management strategies and building resiliency, this especially means water conservation, and this means by all sectors, that means everybody, working together. And to facilitate recharge and, and where that may be beneficial, and to encourage the use of alternative sources of water, especially reclaimed water, recycled water, that helps to mitigate the drought effects. And then we understand that there are all kinds of things that have gone over the last years, 10 years or longer, for conservation efforts by agriculture, precision, agricultural irrigation technologies. But there's more that can be done by everybody. And so we would want to see a refinement of water strategies and all of this leading to some amount of reduction in groundwater pumping. And so with that, I conclude our summary of the water year 2022 annual report. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. This is really, really helpful, and I'll meet with you offline. I think I could spend a couple hours going over it. But, so it's my understanding that the groundwater, the reduction in pumping, Groundwater Pumping Reduction Work Plan is looking at 10%, and that is across the board. That is not going to be a parcel-by-parcel sort of analysis, but that will be like across the sub-basin, correct?
That's correct.
So how do the work plans, or how do you anticipate the work plans can address the equity issue in terms of, for example, someone, a property owner who is doing an excellent job already, conserving and using the best efficiency measures, newest technology, all of that, versus someone who's really not doing much of, at all at this point? And how, how do you see that playing out in the work plan to assure that everyone's doing their part? I'll just leave it there.
We're trying to work on a whole menu of items that are water conservation-focused. And at this time, you know, an emphasis in the work plan will be on volunteered efforts, you know, trying to work together, recognizing that there are different ends of the spectrum, that there are those that are doing everything under the sun and those that may not be doing very much. And we're trying to look at some benchmarking techniques. This work plan is under development, not only with our firm, but also an economics firm, and they are looking at conversation. firm, and they are looking at conversations with a number of different groups and trying to obtain information on, you know, strategies that can be used to try and move the masses towards more conservation. And if all of that together and the working together and the, you know, volunteer approach, you know, if that falls short, you know, then there needs to be included in this work plan, the what next? And there would need to be a description of if that doesn't work, then what would need to be done in a mandatory manner.
Okay, and so I would imagine there would be, you know, checkpoints throughout the timeline to assure that we're going in the right direction and that we're all going in the right direction, and then make those adjustments if that is needed.
Right, it's, it's very complicated, as I flew over with the different hydrology, the different kinds of weather patterns. So the shifting weather patterns make it that much more challenging to know exactly what kind of response that's going to translate to. So the, the key is all the sustainable management criteria and how they are tracked with all these different monitoring networks, and identifying where we may need additional monitoring because of things that we observe are happening in, in local areas, and that information will be a feedback to what else needs to occur.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, Chair Ramos, and thank you so much for the presentation. And yes, I feel like there are a lot of questions that I don't want to get to here today, but would love to keep following up on. So first of all, I appreciate the question from Supervisor Gallagher, because I had a similar question, which is how do we, how, if, if one person is doing everything they can, how does that person get some sense of certainty that others are doing the same? And again, this point that you're making that everyone needs to work together is so important, but I'm happy to hear that you're looking at some benchmarks and kind of best practices for voluntary conservation. And I also wanted to commend you and staff for all the work that you have done in terms of outreach, and I hope that continues because I think this is a, a novel process and a complex process, and it will take a lot of repeated attempts to get the word out. And because everyone is busy at different times, so I appreciate the outreach and I hope we can continue to do more of that. And the other point, this is quite an extensive report, and we're lucky to have you, Ms. Kreitzinger, here today to walk us through everything. I would love to hear if there is a way that you see some of this information being distilled down and not simplified, but a little bit translated. I know when I read the report, I need kind of a cheat sheet that has, you know, PMAs, that means steps. What are the other ones? Minimum thresholds, I translate to yellow flags, you know? So if there's a way that we can tell the story with some more layperson terms, I think we will, because the, the concepts, I think, are not that complicated in themselves, it's just how do we fit them in the larger narrative? So anything that you can tell us about how we might be able to embark on a, on a way of getting the information out better?
That's a very good question, and we're on the cusp of receiving some support from the Department of Water Resources. The GSA staff, Jameson and her staff, put in an application a few weeks ago to DWR, and this afternoon, we have a follow-up call with the department about the Facilitation Support Services that they have approved, and now they're just working on the scope to support that effort. So one of the key things is about trying to provide more information out to the public in a publicly digestible manner. And one of the things that occurred with the Groundwater Sustainability Plan was the inclusion of a more visually oriented executive summary. Even that was kind of on the long side, and we know everybody's busy, so we would attempt to try and create some smaller soundbites, you know, that are also visual, quick reads, and drive at the bottom line, you know, here's what we really want you to know.
That sounds great. It's great to know about that process. I had a couple more questions. First of all, on the, in the report itself, there are two different tables, and I just wondered if you could walk us through. On ES2, there's one number for, it says, table ES2 is about recent groundwater use by water use sector, and then ES5 is, is, is also on groundwater extraction, so I wasn't clear on how those, oh, I guess maybe it is, ES5 is all about an average number? Anyway, if you could help me understand the bottom line on ES2 and ES5, that is one question. And then I'll just piggyback, my second question is, to your point about all sectors need to conserve, and we have these work plans for, you know, winery and vineyard production work plan, we don't have a domestic work plan. Can you speak about that and how we ask our domestic users to step up and do the same voluntary conservation work?
Sure, I think maybe Jameson would like to weigh in on this too, but it, our focus, we wanted to look at what was the largest groundwater user and keep our attention on that inside of the, the work plan underway now. But there's also the integration across the Groundwater Sustainability Plan and what's happening in response to SB 552 on the County Drought and Water Shortage Task Force. And so there are a lot of places where those two programs interrelate. And so I would imagine that there's a lot of additional, you know, work that can occur, you know, complimentary under the SB 552 efforts and the preparation of that guidance document that would address other sectors.
Yeah, and I would just add that it's definitely not our intention to exclude any user group from the necessity to conserve, and we'll definitely be including, I won't say targeting necessary, but we'll definitely be addressing the use by individual well owners. And as Vicki said, it is tied in with our Drought and Water Shortage Task Force, the purpose of which is to assist private well owners whose wells may have gone dry or may go dry in the future. So that's a, happening in parallel. If you don't mind Supervisor Cottrell, I'm going to borrow your minimum threshold equals the yellow flag. I think that's really good, and by that logic, an undesirable result would be a red flag. And the communication outreach effort, in my mind, very much is a translation issue. It's, we have to kind of boil these things down and, and simplify them in a way that's meaningful for people, so please keep prompting us, because it's an ongoing desire, something we're working on at all times, but it's, it's challenging. And to Supervisor Gallagher's point, you asked about equity issues. One of the ways, that's part of the reason that we're not applying that 10% reduction on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We're essentially asking, and I guess you could perceive this as kind of an inequity in that if somebody's already doing a lot, we're just asking that they keep examining and keep trying to, to reach forward and reach higher and reach a little bit higher. So we have kind of talked about, we haven't implemented yet, the idea of having kind of a BMP toolbox of our conservation BMPs, best management practices, so that, for example, if an entity came in and asked, you know, for a permit, a use permit of some kind for their project, we would assess, okay, what BMPs, what level of BMPs are they employing now, and what can they do to get to the next level? And kind of bend them in maybe three different broad categories of kind of mild, medium, and hot. That's not really a good, good metaphor, but anyway, so that whatever BMPs are employing now, we'd ask them to step up to the next, to the next set. I think that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Supervisor Gregory.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Jameson and Vicki. Vicki, this is my seventh annual report, and I, this has so far been the best in terms of distilling a really relatively complex idea down to something understandable, so great job. Yeah, I, I expect a year from now, we're going to get great data and show that we're, we're back, baby. But, but what you're saying is don't get comfortable because, you know, those years, the years we're having are far, far, farther in between, so I get that message. Can we, I'd like to talk a little bit more about surface water, groundwater interaction, and it's one of the topics, and it's harder for people to understand, groundwater level, that's easy, storage, that's easy. This one's a little harder. Can we put up slide number 12, Ms. Hoskins? And I'm wondering if you, Vicki, could you use the, the pictures there on this slide to try to better describe what's sort of a normal interaction that's healthy and what's undesirable?
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, we had many other slides, but we, we reduced the set. So as we look at this slide, and the one that's key for, you know, a good, healthy system is shown in A up in the upper left, and that's when we have groundwater that's at a, a higher level in the system than the, the stage of the, the stream there in the schematic. So we have groundwater moving or discharging to the stream system. So the stream is not only relying on surface water runoff, but it's also receiving groundwater as part of its base flow. So in an unhealthy condition, we can have stream flow being depleted by pumping that may be occurring very locally, and this is a schematic here, but it can also be occurring over a large area. So we have, you know, throughout the sub-basin, we have a large volume of stream flow depletion that is occurring, and we've, you know, documented that in the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and we've described it in the annual report. But the key thing about that depletion is the timing of when it's occurring, not so much the magnitude, but how it relates to what's elsewise in the stream if that pumping weren't occurring. So when that stream flow depletion is occurring and it's removing all of what would have naturally been there because of the pumping, that's the unhealthy condition that we're very much trying to mitigate or entirely avoid.
And do we know now what, what the factor is? Is it distance from well to river? Is it flow? Both? Do we know that now? And if not, is that something we're hoping to learn?
So as part of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, we had done some scenarios with distance of wells from the stream system and also depth within the groundwater system. There's overall, you know, a stream flow depletion that's occurring on a larger scale. So it's, there can be the individual look at where a discretionary permit, for instance, might be, you know, advancing the idea of putting in a well, and that can be mitigated to some extent by how that well is constructed. But overall, we're trying to look at the bigger picture of what depletion is occurring by more than one well, by many wells.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hoskins, could you give us slide 17? Couple, couple more forward. Just want to ask a question. This is, this is the, for me, the most important slide that gives us the big picture of everything put together. Yeah. Is it safe to say that the, at least in the last 20 years, the, those depressions where the bar graph goes below normal, those are drought, periods of severe drought?
On the very top of that graph is the water year type, so the yellows to blues to reds, so the, the reds being the drought. So they do line up.
Right, okay. So this shows that we do bounce back with a normal year or, or a fantastic year like we're having, but what you're saying is, as droughts deepen and get more severe, it's harder to come back.
Right, and in the Napa Valley Sub Basin, that responsiveness to what's occurring because of the water year type, the drier or wetter condition, it pretty soon in time affects the river system. The, the sub-basin's pretty responsive to that. So elsewhere, you know, there can be, there's greater depths to groundwater, there can be more use of groundwater during certain times and what, surface water and other times conjunctively used. Here, that connection between surface water and groundwater is really important to the health of the river system. So even though there's only two years and we, you know, had a partial bounce back and, and we expect that there's likely going to be a full bounce back after this year, that it's trying to look at those things that can be done locally to help mitigate and temper, you know, when these other, you know, unknown, uncertain, you know, drought times occur, you know, how we can create a situation where the water, when it occurs, like the fall of 2021, that precipitation was a lot, but then we had very little after that. If we can capture that, retain more of that on the land, get more of that in the subsurface, then we may be able to mitigate some of that later drought effect.
And then last question is about recharge. I'm really interested in this one. I sit on the Napa Sanitation District Board of Directors, represent the board on there. And lately, we've been selling every ounce of water we make in the spring and summer in terms of recycled water, but there's a lot of winter water that just gets wasted. And do we know where areas are ripe for artificial recharge? Where we could use that winter water that's otherwise being sent down the river?
We've looked at some places in a couple different ways. So as part of the Stormwater Resource Plan, there's maps where it may be parcels that are closer to stormwater and small amounts of recharge that might occur through urban efforts. Elsewhere on a larger scale in the sub-basin, we've mapped some of the more physically conducive areas for receiving recharged water. One of the things that we want to do, though, is to look at, you know, where would that recharge need to occur so that it's not, you know, going right into the system and going right back out of the system? That slide we talked about a moment ago where groundwater is discharging to the stream system, if we put it in, we don't want it to discharge a month later, and then the benefit of that recharge is somewhat lost, you know, for our intents. So we're trying to look at places that are more removed, you know, from stream system, but the lag effect would benefit the stream system over the long run. The other thing is whether this kind of year, you know, we have potentially magnitudes, more recharge that's going to occur naturally than what we could do on a parcel scale, you know, individually. But we've also wanted to look at, you know, what could be done on a lot of parcels if you, you know, scale that up? And through practices, best management practices, you know, when there's that water available, can we keep it on the landscape? Can we get it in the ground? So we've had conversations with a professor at UC Davis, she's part of a team, you know, pending what happens with the DWR grant submitted by the GSA in mid-December, that there would be additional efforts to go forward to look at recharge opportunities and to encourage, you know, interest in those opportunities to try some things on the landscape.
Great. Well, and Napa stands certainly a willing partner, so let's get that on our list and take a look. But thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cottrell, follow up?
Thank you, yeah, I had two things. First of all, I think, Jameson, at the outset, you mentioned that, that you would be looking for an invitation from this board to come back and go more into the tag. And I, I'm hoping that we can make that invitation today and just kind of get things scheduled because, as Supervisor Gregory was saying, you know, we have a moment right now when we're, we're, have a lot of water, which is wonderful, and hopefully it buys us time to keep doing the work we need to do and, and lower the temperature a little bit so that we can get the data and just be more prepared as a community. So that's one thing, the invitation. And then second, on the, on the GSP work plans, I'm thinking about how the GSP interfaces with other parts of our county regulatory system. And for example, it's my understanding that, you know, changing row orientation can be a water-saving mechanism, and yet, if you're talking about changing row orientation, you might have to come in and file for a replant permit. And so is, is part of the work plan envisioning how we can ask other parts of our regulatory system to look at streamlining?
We'll definitely kind of coordinate those, those efforts, and, and changing row orientation is, is a good technique, but obviously it's not something you just go out and do, decide you want to do tomorrow. It's something, as we understand from the stakeholders we've worked with, you know, it might happen on a 20- or 30-year time horizon. So it's something we want people to be thinking about now so that for the, you know, whatever percentage that are... So it's something we want people to be thinking about now so that for the, you know, whatever percentage that are, uh, envisioning that in any given year, they're thinking about it now. But we will most definitely coordinate that with the permitting process.
Thank you. Um, Vicky, I, I agree with Supervisor Gregory. I think that this was a very digestible way to receive our, our annual water year report. I most definitely, I, I'll just say, I think I've, I've learned, um, a significant amount from the visual that is on slide six, which was the drought monitoring of the coloring of, of, of yellow and orange and red and deep purple. Certainly something that's familiar, right? As we've talked over, uh, the last few years about drought in a very public way. I think those types of mapping and that type of categorization is really important for us to be able to see those ebbs and flows and to, uh, really understand, uh, how we are different from other, other basins that have been in a critical state. And pointedly, that we are very susceptible to, to what's happening as we see it, not just necessarily underground, right? Where some basins are definitely influenced on the underground activities, but we're influenced on the, on the ground activities. And so that's a really important point. You know, in, in lifting the drought, the statewide drought, uh, uh, emergency orders. Um, yesterday, the, the governor highlighted a recharge project in yellow. And it was an amazing project because it said, you know, we didn't want the water over here, but we needed it over here. So we just pumped the water over to this area that actually needed the recharge and was being able to use, uh, for agricultural purposes, working with the farming community. So I too, um, share in the interest of, uh, being able to develop the mapping more for, for recharge to understand where the point of recharge is most effective, um, so that it's not just, uh, you know, water in and water out. But certainly having this big picture awareness of where we're at, um, is, is prudent at this time where, uh, you know, we are all sighing with, uh, one more, one more day of, of, of this moisture in, in the air that we are all growing, uh, that we're, uh, grateful for, yet, uh, tiring of quite quickly. Um, I really appreciate your, your efforts in this. So I don't see any more questions from the board at this time. I'm going to go ahead and...
I'm sorry, if I could just want, add one thing to Supervisor Cottrell's invitation to return. Happy to do that. If, if I could ask of you, if you could think about kind of the management, the questions that you would like to have answered, like, when you think about how do we manage the sub-basin? What do you want to hear from the technical advisory group? What kind of, what do you want them to kind of pre-cogitate on and, and deliver to you? I'd like to kind of create a situation where we have a, a feedback loop between the questions that you all might have about how to manage the basin. We take those back to the tag, provide them the technical basis for them to, um, provide an answer to you and then deliver those answers and perhaps think of some of their own questions. So, um, in the meantime, uh, think about those and feel free to reach out. Let me know what they are. Thank you.
Excellent. At this time, I'm going to take public comment on this.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. John Tudor, in my private capacity as a landowner up in the hills, uh, we have a large cattle ranch, and I'm wondering if there are best management practices that those of us who are high on the aquifer and do a lot of the gathering of rainwater for the recharge, I don't need an answer today, but I was hoping that those of us who, and most of the property, lots of the property up on the top of the hills that feed the sub-basin are still in large parcels. So I just wanted to throw that out for Jameson and Vicky to think about how we can be involved.
Thank you. Next public comment?
Oh, good morning to the, uh, Sustainable Agency. Uh, this is Gary Margatant from up on Mount Vitor Road. I think that John's, uh, comment is, is very apropos. Is that people who are outside the basin can, uh, can really be of service and help, help to you. And so it's always the nice to have that, that outreach to be done. I do want to say one thing about, you know, this report that you're sending out, I mean, you're receiving today. And that is that I haven't been able to read it because it wasn't available to me. So I would have been, uh, you know, um, let's say, a little more succinct in some of my comments. I wanted to also say that, um, in the GSP, uh, implementation, uh, the Department of Water Resources has given you, um, their, their view of, of corrections that are necessary, that you have to do for this GSP. And I think that you ought to, you ought to be included in the things that you have to do and you have to look at. Because the, um, one of the, the GSP, uh, comments that they meant is that you can't, you shouldn't be using drought as, as something to decide how long you're going to be, uh, under these, uh, uh, restraints based on the, uh, undesirable results. And, uh, I, I noticed that, you know, that you, you spoke about the future and developing innovative tools and technology. And, uh, there was a conference just here by the water audit on Friday, which some of that was discussed at that time. It was a group that came from, uh, let's see, what was his name? Uh, it was Mark Cramm. He was a, a PhD president of the, uh, the groundwater, groundswell technology. And he talked about, you know, modeling that they had done down in Ventura in, in their, in that water basin down there. And that I thought was very apropos, and it was something that was, uh, available, available for you to look at. And I don't understand why most of you did not come to that event. Two of the supervisors did, but the rest of you did not. And so I'm, I'm trying to understand why, why that was, uh, handled in that respect. Because I understood that, that Jameson and, and many of the, uh, employees were going to, originally scheduled to be speaking at that event. And that was a good time for collaboration. One of the collaborators was, was a very interesting person, person. His name was, um, Rick Marovich. And he was the Puda Creek, um, let's see, s- stream, uh, manager. And his lessons learned and how he managed to, um, let's say, corral people together to do and, and find out how they were going to manage this was something that was a great lesson learned that you're going to be, you needing to experience, you know, amongst all of the landowners and the stakeholders.
Thank you, Mr. Margatant.
And I suggest that you really pay attention to that.
Any other public comment?
Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And I'll bring it back to the board. And we are to approve the submittal. We're being asked, we have received the report and the summary of the tag. You have received an invitation to, to bring updates and collaboration with the tag back to the board. Uh, but our action item for today is approval of the submittal of the annual report to the California Department of Water Resources.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Supervisor Gregory, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we will next take up item eleven A. We'll take a short break and then we will come back for the county's annual report. So, um, at this time, I would like to invite up the Assistant Recorder County Clerk as our ex officio, registrar of voters. You're requesting an adoption of a resolution electing not to publish supporters and opponents of local measures on the ballot. Um, I did ask, uh, Mr. Tudor to be here on this admin item and move this to an admin item so that we can have a discussion about what the practical effects are of these changes to, um, our elections and, um, most specifically, more specifically to our ballot. So thank you, Mr. Tudor, um, for being here.
So I'm here today in my capacity as your registrar of voters, but I'm going to mix my metaphors a little bit because I'm going to talk about real estate. This is the Voters Information Guide. It is very, very cheap real estate. You can print as much as you want. They can get big, they can get small, they're mailed to every voter. And where I stuck the ballot into that book is where the supporters and opponents show up. There it is, in the VIG. And that, every voter gets that. These are available at all our vote centers. They're available in our office. Cheap real estate, they're there. For some reason, the state legislature doesn't understand real estate. Ballot real estate is hugely expensive. It's expensive in several ways. It's expensive for the voter, the time it takes to actually work through the ballot. And there's a huge drop off in voter participation between the beginning of the ballot. In the twenty sixteen presidential election, there was a thirty-seven percent drop off from people who just voted for president. So what this bill would require, unless this board allows us to exempt it, is that those supporters and opponents show up on each one of these propositions. And to do that is going to expand what is here a four-sided ballot, probably to a six-sided ballot, just for that. And my concern is not just the cost of that, but what it's going to cause voters to do. There's already a drop off between regular races for candidates from the top of the ballot to the bottom of the ballot. I think if you make this a six-page proposition. Now, by the way, I do want to point out, the legislature has mandated that opponents and supporters show on the state propositions. They are going to be there, and we'll see how bad that looks in November of twenty twenty-four. I'm just asking that that not happen to local measures. Uh, and I sent you all, as a part of my earlier comments, a local ballot measure where these actual opponents and supporters would have been on the physical ballot. That was a one-measure ballot because it was for the city of Calistoga. But still, it would have complicated the ballot, made it much more difficult to know where to put the yes and no box, et cetera. So what I did was, there's no requirement in the law for me, before I come to you, to check with our special districts and schools and municipalities. Because in this case, the legislature has given you the authority to stop opponents and supporters from everybody at the local level. I got only one feedback from a county district, which was very positive. Uh, and Placer County has taken this action already. I wanted to be first, but they beat me to it. So, uh, that's my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Think for me, one of the, um, one of the questions that, um, I have is, given that we have the authority to do it, if there is a special election, say, a one-issue ballot election similar to what happened in the city of Calistoga, and that jurisdiction is wanting to add supporters and opponents, what do we do then? What authority do we have there?
Well, uh, that's a question beyond my legal capacity, since I'm not a lawyer. But my guess is that if this board has the ability to ban it or not use it, I would assume that upon the request of a jurisdiction, you could revisit this. They would come to me and I would come to you. I would have to ask county council that. And besides, any action you take is not, if you'll pardon, cast in bronze. It could be changed at any moment. If after you see the November twenty twenty-four ballot and you think supporters and opponents haven't added more than six pages of ballots, you could come back to me and say, I think, John, we want to reverse what we did, or maybe we want to look at those. But I'm happy to explore your question, Chair Ramos, with, uh, county council. My guess is if you can ban it, you can permit it, and that's just off the top of my head.
Sure.
Supervisor Gregory?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tudor. I'm trying to understand. So is this new? Because I don't know that I've ever seen supporters.
They're, they're not on here.
Right. I don't think I've ever seen them on our local ballot. So is this a new thing?
It was a state mandate for state propositions effective January first, twenty twenty-three. So the first time you'll see it is in November twenty twenty-four.
Okay, good. So it is new. Okay, good. And so for, for me, the greater detail's always been in here, and this has been simple. And I, I don't know that I prefer us to be mixing and matching, you know, down the road. And the longer this is, the, the less people vote. So this is a no-brainer for me. Thank you.
Supervisor Cottrell?
Thank you, Chair Ramos, and thank you, Mr. Tudor. I was just going to look to our county council if, if, uh, there were any comments she had.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Chair Ramos and the board. Uh, in looking at the statute, it appears as long as the change is made thirty days in advance of, uh, the deadline for submitting, submitting arguments for and against, we could reverse our kind of standing, uh, prohibition. Um, so that, uh, we can look at it further, uh, but reading it, um, on, online, that's what appears to be the flexibility.
Thank you. I, I certainly do think, uh, maintaining the status quo is, because that's what this action is, correct? Maintaining the status quo of not to include, uh, a longer, uh, ballot summary, right? A, a, a measure summary on the ballot. I think that maintaining the status quo is the right thing for us. You know, I would just, I, I, I would just, I'm a little cautious about if we have a special election that is coming from just one jurisdiction, um, if there, if we might end up with a request in that sense. So I think we do need to be prepared for that, of what that might, might be. Um, as far as a ballot as, uh, general and primary, I agree. We don't, we don't need to be making four pages into six pages. But I, I don't see any other questions from, from the board. Unless there's, uh, more for you to add, Mr. Tudor, I will open public comment on this item. Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Um, and we are being requested that we adopt a resolution. Supervisor Gallagher?
I just wanted to agree with, um, my colleagues that, um, anything we can do to keep the ballot as, uh, simple and straightforward as possible and promote, um, voting is what we should be doing. So, um, thank you, and this is a good, good move.
Thank you. Excellent. Your will, board, on this?
So moved.
Second?
We're in need of a coffee break around here. I, uh, we have a motion by Supervisor Cottrell, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
No, I'm by him.
Sorry, Supervisor, the other G, Supervisor Gregory. All, the OG. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to take a fifty-minute break. We will be back at ten forty-five.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. We are now back from recess. At this time, uh, the interim county executive officer, um, and staff will present Napa County's 2022 annual report. Mr. CEO.
Uh, yes, I'd like to introduce Deputy CEO Lawson to come up to the, um, uh, microphone and go ahead and present the county annual report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrison. Good morning, Chair Ramos, members of the board, colleagues and community members. I am delighted to join you this morning to share Napa County's 2022 annual report. The report is not intended to be a comprehensive overview of everything that happened last year, but instead to provide a very brief snapshot of the many accomplishments we saw in 2022. I'd like to thank my colleagues for sharing their stories with us. And in particular, I'd like to thank Linda Ong, our Communication and Public Information Officer, for her work on the annual report and for producing the video you're about to see. I also want to acknowledge Johanna Silverthorne on my team for her expert graphic design work, It Takes a Village. I now invite you to take a look at the video which shares some of the highlights of 2022. Fingers crossed. We'll try that again.
Hello, I'm Valia Ramos, Chair of the Napa County Board of Supervisors, and it is my pleasure to introduce you to the 2022 annual report for Napa County. The year was full of so many accomplishments. We forged ahead to complete major projects, strengthen and develop new partnerships, and found new ways to engage the community. Let's take a look back at some of the year's highlights. We laid the groundwork for a new vision for the county airport by approving long-term agreements with two fixed space operators, Atlantic Aviation and Sky Service U.S. The agreements will bring an estimated $130 million in benefits to the county. We also made significant strides in infrastructure. That included rehabilitating thirty miles of road, paving thirty-two miles in the unincorporated area, the most in a single year, repairing nine bridges, and installing and replacing four miles of guard rail.
Public safety remained a top priority, one that led to an important investment. In October, we awarded a construction contract for the new Napa County Replacement Detention Facility that would be located along Highway 221. This project will replace the existing downtown Napa jail, offering not only more beds, but a modern mental health and medical unit.
That commitment to public safety extended to our most vulnerable populations. Health and Human Services launched new programs, including the Mental Health Mobile Response Team for community-based interventions and the Bringing Families Home program to support families receiving child welfare services. We also formed meaningful partnerships. Health and Human Services teamed up with the county library to offer mental health and social services on-site at the Napa and American Canyon libraries.
Looking out for our community also meant addressing housing gaps. Housing affordability continues to present a challenge to the county. And that's why the board passed the Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit Forgivable Loan Program. And we continue to look out for furry residents, our cats, our dogs, our rabbits. At the Napa County Animal Shelter, a total of eight hundred and twelve pets found their forever homes.
We also made great strides in defensible space to slow or stop the spread of wildfires. With the help of Napa Community's Firewise Foundation and other partnering organizations, the Napa County Fire Department treated two hundred and four acres to reduce or remove fuel load, removed sixty-five miles of roadside vegetation, and shipped fifty-five thousand four hundred and forty-six cubic yards. The Soda Canyon Roadside Clearing Project was instrumental during May's old fire by providing egress for community members and ingress for first responders. It also served as a space for fire containment. We also worked to expand fire protection services. Construction continued on the new Carnero Satellite Fire Station, doubling the size of the old station on Old
Do you want to keep going?
Snowma Highway.
We also remain committed to protecting and promoting our agriculture. Culture. Napa's the first county in California to launch a trapping program for the highly invasive spotted lanternfly. From May through October, inspectors monitored the pest using twenty insect traps strategically placed around the county.
And finally, community engagement remained a top priority. For our June and November elections, voter turnout was ten percent above the statewide average.
The Agriculture Committee Sheriff's Office hosted classes in English and Spanish to nearly seven hundred and fifty growers and agriculture workers. Napa County Fire connected with the community through outreach and public education. outreach and public education, and the new 4-H after-school called began to offer enriching after-school activities. As we look toward 2023, things are taking shape for a robust year.
At least some of these freeze frames are improving as we're going.
We stay focused on our court commitments as we continue to address the county's evolving needs. Projects in the works include creating a new regional climate action plan, updating the Fire Services Master Plan, adopting the housing element, and kicking off the update of the general plan. With the collaboration of the Board of Supervisors, county staff, partners, and residents, paired with a renewed sense of commitment to our goals, we are in a strong position to achieve so much in the year ahead. To view the full annual report, please visit countyofnapa.org/annualreport.
Well, that was supposed to be 4 minutes and 23 seconds, and it will be available on YouTube, on our website, and on social media for you to watch without interruptions.
Thank you. The importance of it is why we took a little bit longer. If you would, we do have actual handouts of a summary of the annual report. As Ms. Dawson said, it's not, it's not complete as to everything that we have done, but if you would, Ms. Dawson, tell us where someone can view the printed, the printed handout as well as the video, how someone can access that.
Both the video and the printed document in PDF form will be available on our website this afternoon.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to all of our departments, those featured, and those that help us deliver the high-quality level of service that our Napa County residents receive year in and year out. It's, it's great to be able to take these moments to actually highlight a few, but that is just, again, a snapshot. There is so much that is done on a daily basis here by our over 1,500 employees of the County of Napa that help deliver services, some of them state mandates, some of them programs that are important to our residents, and others that the Board has prioritized as wanting to, to level up and raise the bar when it comes to living here, working here, and enjoying to visit here in Napa County. So thank you to all who participated. I will take public comment on this item at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and unless the Board has any comments or questions, excellent, we will be moving along to Item 11C. Our Chief Information Officer requests the following actions: Receive a staff presentation of the significance of data management and provide direction to staff to implement a consistent process across the county, and request authorization to issue an RFP to contract with a consultant to develop a platform to consistently collect, manage, and govern data. Mr. Yan Yesfeng. Your timing is outstanding. Sorry, I had to. And I do, it would be great also if you do introduce who's, who's with us today.
I will.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good morning, still. Chair Ramos, members of the Board, I'm Yan Yesfeng, and I am the Chief Information Officer for Information Technology Services Division, and I am joined behind me here, Jennifer Yasamoto, Director of Health and Human Services, Amanda Gibbs, Chief Probation Officer, Jennifer Palmer, Director of Housing and Homeless Services, and Dan Glasgow, who is the Deputy CIO of Applications and Development in ITS. So today, we want to have a discussion about data, specifically us moving from where we're at today in our state of data management into, I'm going to call it, next-generation data, and that includes, you know, management of data and everything that coalesces with that. Part of this discussion is, is more of a, you know, introducing the topic to your board to get you, give you an idea of what we would like to do going forward. You know, we might not have all the details of this, but that would be more coming as we get deeper into this, but did want to give in advance a heads-up on where we're going with this. So in addition, we also would like your Board to consider and potentially approve a request for, a request for proposal for a enterprise data management system as well. So just to kind of set the stage a little bit, you know, when we're talking about moving from where we're at today to kind of this next generation, you know, you go back in history with technology and kind of look at big shifts, if you will. So back in the 1990s, when we went from mainframe to desktop computers that were connected to smaller servers, you know, that was a big change. Also, as we moved from desktop-only to more mobile-device computing, that was a big shift for, for the county. And, you know, as we moved from on-premise only to a mix of on-premise and cloud solutions, you know, that's another big shift that we go through. And with all of these initiatives, the increased productivity, you know, was, was questioned, and initial investment in these technologies was unknown, but as we got deeper into those, we kind of had an idea of what that was. So however, you know, with, with data, we do want to make that leap from where we are today into, you know, this next-generation data, where we fully utilize the data that we have in our systems. So I should probably advance these slides for you. So just some definitions real quick. You know, you probably heard the term "big data," "data warehousing," "data legs." I mean, there's probably other terms you've heard. Really, they're different words that mean essentially the same thing, and that is a enterprise means of managing and processing information. And so basically, it, it's, you know, how we pull in data, how we manage that data, how we interlink that data, and how we produce data sets. So it's all kind of encompassed in that. Data strategy, we're looking at, you know, going down that road, too. So we have a roadmap for that, but basically it'll help us translate our organizational priorities into actionable strategy goals and provide us with, you know, tangible roadmap, like I said, towards data management. Data government will lay the foundational framework to successfully execute our strategy. And, you know, finally, when we talk about enterprise data management system, that is essentially that system that's going to house all that information and correlate all that information and provide the data that needed for reporting, dashboarding, analytics. So our challenges, and I won't go through in detail on all of these, but basically, as an organization, we have this mindset today about how data, how we use data, how we access data, how do we report on data. What we want to do is move to an organization that's more data-savvy, that understands, you know, how we can, you know, utilize our data assets more. And so, you know, that goes to having a more data-knowledgeable organization for that. And, you know, we have data that's locked in various systems that are departmental or regional or state systems, and those, you know, that information is siloed. So when we go to pull information out, we have to, you know, figure all those pieces out. With a data management system, you know, we will be able to pull information via integrations into our, into one location where we can easily, more easily report on that data. You know, we also want to provide information to the public or any public request, so, you know, we want to do that efficiently, too. You know, some of these requests take time to, you know, search information, collect information, then present that information out. We want to be more timely on that. And, you know, we want to be able to consistently track our services, understand how we're doing, and so, you know, that, that's been a challenge as well. So with the challenges, you know, you flip that, and, you know, we look to opportunities in how we move forward. So again, you know, we want to, you know, move, shift to an organization that appreciates and understands data and is very knowledgeable in that area. You know, we need to work together as departments to, you know, look at data cross-functionally, not just department by department, but working together, because a lot of services come from various departments, not just one department. And so we need the ability to be able to, to gather that information so that as a functional area or the county as a whole, we can really, you know, manage and understand the information, you know, services that we're, that we're putting out there. With all this information, we do need, you know, the upfront data quality from these systems, so that's part of that knowledge of the, of the worker to understand, you know, that they understand the business side of their organization, and they understand what is good data. So we have quality data coming, and that's managed in the source systems, and then that is pulled into the, the data management system. And so we're not correcting data when it's downstream. It's, you know, we go look back and do that in source. So again, data quality and knowledge around that. And then, you know, with what we're doing and with that data, again, we need that system, that enterprise data management system to, you know, manage that and the processes that we have. And then finally, you know, we talk about, and having a pass about our county's stories, and, you know, the best story has the cohesive and, and quality data behind that. So, you know, making it easier with data sets, being able to provide those stories and backing that with information. So as we move forward, I'll talk to the first point here in Phase 1. We're looking at, and I mentioned this before, is really sitting down and understanding the priorities of the business and translating that into strategies and then actionable items. So we will be working through that. At this point, I'd like to, you know, as we talk about collaboration with, you know, the three departments that are here, I'd like to have them come up and kind of talk about their stories, and I'll start, we'll start with Amanda Gibbs, Chief Probation Officer.
Good morning, Chair Ramos and members of the Board. Thank you for allowing us to present to you today. I'm Amanda Gibbs, Chief Probation Officer with Napa County, and I am only one part of Napa County's larger data context, but I want to give you a little bit of information about what's happening in the probation department. Probation's mission is to enforce court orders to inspire positive change, to transform the lives of offenders, victims, and families, and promote community safety. Our purpose is to improve the well-being of those we serve, and our vision is that we aspire to contribute to a safe and thriving community. We are committed to our mission, purpose, and vision, and we also believe wholeheartedly in collaboration. We have big goals and big dreams to support the success in our community, and we need data in order to help us do that. Our current system, CJNET, is still under development in its entirety, and we lack meaningful ways to extract data for the purpose of quality assurance and system improvements. The data pools currently are often manual and tedious and take many hours for even simple data, and being able to extract, analyze, and report this data is critical. We get a lot of information requests from the public, some Brown Act meetings, and it is important to us that we are able to be transparent and provide the information that the county and the public is looking for. One unique quality about Napa County is that we value collaboration and innovation, and as department heads, we know that we're serving the same people and families. What we don't know is who we are, who we share, and how we are serving them among our departments. We only know through data what we have in our own silos, although we do have a network of collaboration where we speak to each other and try to do that without data, but it's increasingly difficult. We also know that there's a better way to offer opportunities for success for those we serve, and data would provide the ability to identify additional gaps in service delivery, to help us coordinate care easily outside of our departments, and to allow us to be proactive to see how services are being delivered across cross-functional areas, and how well those services are being utilized and how effective they are. Currently, we have people that we serve who have multiple case plans in many different areas, and it's difficult to coordinate those services because we simply don't know. We could better assist them with receiving streamlined services to reduce barriers to success, like transportation, time off work, et cetera. This presentation is about the need to increase access to data, but it's really about people, people who live in our community. A person on probation is not just someone who's been convicted of a crime. They're also parents and neighbors and human beings often struggling with challenges like mental health, substance abuse, and housing. To serve them, we need to help the entire person through each of our systems. With an enterprise data management system, we truly can try to understand who we are collectively serving and how best to serve them, and be proactive to understand the needs of this population to prevent further entrenchment into the justice system. This is really about prevention. Proactive data means proactive services and the potential to save lives and have a positive effect on families for generations. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Palmer, Director of Housing and Homeless Services. I think I just want to follow up on Amanda's presentation with maybe a really practical example of an instance where we didn't have the data system. We patched it together with what we could, but to say that we could do this so much more efficiently and effectively on a daily basis. Last fall, our staff and some staff from the Sheriff's Department got together and did a sort of point-in-time data matchup to look at, of the folks that we have housed over the last three years, what does their criminal justice involvement look like prior to housing, and what does it look like post-housing? To do this, we had to do a manual data poll out of our HMIS system. We have to do a data cleanup with Abode Services to make sure that all the right birth dates are in there, all the right names. Sometimes clients get entered multiple times in our system, so there's cleanup on our system. We then share that data on a, on a secure thumb drive, because we're not going to email it. We don't have a system to share it. I'm literally driving it down to the Sheriff's Department, handing it off to somebody with a password-protective thumb drive. They are then going into their system and matching up on a per-person basis and looking at who did they serve, what was the law enforcement interaction, what was the amount of jail time, what was the time in a courtroom, pulling all that together. What we found, and it was probably 20 to 30 hours of staff time to do it, is there is an almost 75% reduction in criminal justice involvement when someone is housed. It is, it is so powerful to look at some of our highest consumers of the criminal justice system. As soon as we got them into housing, it completely falls off. It is so much less expensive to invest in housing support and rental assistance than it is to pay for all the staff time on the criminal justice side. This is the kind of thing that an integrated data system would allow us to take a better look at, and one of the things that has immediately followed that project is we're attempting to do the same with the probation data, to look at over the last year, the number of folks released from incarceration, how many of them show up in our system. This was a data poll that happened two weeks ago, and we're just in the midst of. Probation had a list of about 6,000 names that they send, but their name list doesn't, it doesn't get entered in the same way our data does, so there's cleanup that has to happen just before we can even do a per-person match. So there's a couple hours there to learn that in common, about 10% of the folks that are in the probation system are also in our shelter system right now. This is such effective data, to be able to look at who is really living in that cycle of criminal justice involvement and homelessness. We know that anybody who's coming out of the criminal justice system has really increased barriers to jobs and housing. We need to know who we really need to wrap support around, because it benefits the entire community when we're helping break that cycle. But right now, we just don't have a way to even get that data except for these one-off projects. So an investment in a system that allows us to take a better look really So an investment in a system that allows us to take a better look really is an investment in better utilization of all of the resources that we have.
Good morning, Chair Ramos, members of the Board of Supervisors. Jennifer Yasamoto, Health and Human Services Agency Director. And I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to be here and to see the county at this point. This is a topic near and dear to my heart. It is something that I started looking into and pulled groups together back in 2019 when we were then looking at an IBM master data warehousing system that was also a front-end case management system. So I echo everything that my colleagues here said, both in the technical, but also in the why. And I will tell you that I think this system is about reinventing our system of care. I work every single day across an agency that is by its design hierarchically siloed. And it's siloed by a myriad of regulations. It's siloed by 14 different data systems that our staff work tirelessly, sometimes antiquated systems that are the state's systems, work tirelessly to collaborate and partner, and we're not giving them the tools to actually support their work. And as we think about our priorities over the next 10, 20 years, technology has to come and support the work that we're doing. We will, I will also say this just from a workforce recruitment and retention standpoint, giving people sticks and stones isn't a really aspirational sort of job environment to work in. So I think giving our system the every advantage we can, the departments that sit before you today are safety net departments. We are serving the absolute most vulnerable and marginalized. This is a group of people that are by, by design hard to engage and difficult oftentimes to work with, but we therefore need to be a system that lowers the barriers. So great intentions are wonderful, and they're going to fall flat if we don't have the tools that we need. I think every day about the interventions that you do, so we talk about the stories that we can publicly talk about, there are the success stories we will see every single day. Every client who walks through our door who now has, when, when those of us go to a system like Kaiser, we walk through that door and Kaiser has eye in the sky and they can see everything. We need to have that same system. We are extremely siloed. We want to partner. We have opportunities. We come together. We come together in multidisciplinary team meetings, but quite frankly, that's just not enough. And when we're talking about across an entire county set of departments, I think this system will have the potential to maybe even serve other parts of the county. It will be the foundation and the platform. But we also are a county that's sort of small enough, we've got an entire network of community-based providers that also should be sharing in our data because we're all one system. And we actually have spent a lot of time over the last several years working out some of our operational protocols to sharing data in anticipation of operationalizing that through technology. I guess, I would just also add that I feel so strongly about this because, you know, I think a system like this is, it's life-saving and it's life-changing. There is any number of times where you interact with an individual and you wonder if we had provided that one additional service or that one additional support had been there. Might the trajectory have been different? And I absolutely think the answer to that is yes. And in many cases, this is not just life-changing, it's life-saving. So again, I think an upstream investment pays downstream impacts in spades. I will also share that, you know, I think the idea of sharing data isn't necessarily so novel, right? It's about the infrastructure that you provide to support that work. Through, I think it's AB 133, the state is really embarking upon a data, I think they're calling it the Health and Human Services Agency Data Exchange Framework. And as of January of this year, hospitals and other healthcare providers were required to sign in. What it basically is, is a mandate to share health data, to share social services data, and for governments to share data across systems for this very person, purpose, to treat the whole person in a holistic and system-of-care-based way. It is not a mandate yet for counties. It may not become a mandate, so I'll just put that out there. But there has been, part of the legislation is that CSAC is really supporting counties to sign on to this agreement. Now, you can sign on to the agreement, but it's a little bit of a hollow signature if you don't have the supports behind it, and you're really then relying upon, as Jennifer said, running around and doing your best to collaborate using paper and thumb drives. So I think that's just an important broader context for knowing that the state of California is realizing the very same thing that we have known, and they're looking to mandate some providers. But there is an absolute vision for counties to sign on to this. And I think any data system's going to take a while to get implemented and up and running. I feel like we're a little bit behind the curve on this one, so I think the call to action is now, and I'm really grateful that our ITS director is here kind of pushing this from an infrastructure standpoint because really that's the, that's the system that's going to hold the glue together for not just our county departments, but for our community at large. So that's all I had to add.
If I may, I'd just like to add a few comments to Director Yasamoto's comments. Whether we see, what we see across the board currently is a significant state initiative to push more responsibility back on the counties. We all have seen that in recent weeks. Whether it's the governor's announcement that, or I'm sorry, the governor's proposal to shift money out of MHSA funding to housing and then allow for more flexibility with the remainder of those funds, or whether it's the cap on the number of state hospital patients that will be accepted, which is going to push more state hospital patients into the counties, whether it's debates about how we deal with law and justice and how we treat inmates and probationary inmates in terms of providing social services, or whether the frequent state push, frequent state efforts recently to require cities and counties to step up on providing homes for homeless. Across the board, we're seeing more responsibility being pushed in the counties and more emphasis on integrated services to help address these various concerns that we're having to deal with. And so one of the reasons why the CEO's office has also asked this to be brought forward because we're also a very strong proponent and supporter for moving forward with this kind of approach.
Thank you, Amanda, Jennifer, Jennifer, and David, for, that, very powerful in what you said. You know, what we're talking about right, just right now i- is a piece of information access that we want. You know, the system, the governance, the strategy, I mean, this is applicable countywide. And, you know, you had, your board had a presentation on groundwater sustainability from the agency, talking about sensors and being able to measure. Well, that's data, and, you know, that's going to be sitting someplace, but that's information that needs to be pulled in so we can correlate and provide that information to your board, to the state. And so, you know, just another example of that. Climate Action Committee, I know they're working hard, but that's going to be information that's going to need to be provided to the state and to others. So, you know, those are just a couple of examples in addition to what we just talked about right now, that data is so important and is powerful once we have that in a system where we can easily access and know that it's quality data. So just kind of recap our plan moving forward. You know, I mentioned strategy and governance. We are going to be putting together a workshop around that, and department heads will be attending that along with, you know, those that they want in attendance. And then, and again, that's going to define, you know, our strategic goals around data based on priorities. And this is countywide, it's just not, you know, the first phase. And then on the heels of that, we'll do the data governance, which will be sometime in mid-May. And then finally, we, you know, we want to seek out and see what's out there as far as systems. You know, Jennifer mentioned one with IBM. There are others, but, you know, we want to see what's out there, what would best fit our needs, and also get kind of a range of what, what is that going to cost us? And then, you know, once we have that, come back to the board and provide that information. So just some, in moving forward, some considerations, you know, really it's making a strong commitment from the leadership group on, you know, this, this is something that we need and will get supported. I mentioned staffing. You know, I mentioned in each of the departments, it's not just ITS that's doing this. This is a collaboration with ITS and departments, and departments need, you know, the appropriate staffing to stay focused on data and the data needs of the department and working with ITS. Funding, you know, I mentioned a little bit about, is, you know, having either the RFP and come back with, this is what it's going to cost, providing you with more detail on that. And then finally, which is very important, is security. You know, we talk about pulling data from different systems, and some of our system has, you know, have confidential information. And, you know, when you think about pulling data into kind of one area, that's a concern. There are staff that have a business need to see certain types of information at a detailed level that's confidential, but there might be other departments that aren't, that do not. So, you know, probation might not be, not need to see everything about somebody, but, you know, need to see enough information. So, you know, we have to set up those, those security rules to do that. We have, as a county, we have regulations that we have to follow. Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act is one. We have others more stringent that relate to behavioral health, child welfare services and child support. So we really have to have that as part of the system too, that we can easily do that. And really, that the benefit, as you heard, is just really being able to understand and our services going forward and being able to measure and track and make adjustments as needed, and being able to track residents and clients across the board to make sure we're providing what they need. So with that, that kind of wraps up the presentation. Just as a reminder, we do seek consideration and approval for, request for approval for an enterprise data management system. And so with that, I'll turn it over for questions and comments.
Thank you so much. I think it certainly was very impactful to hear how we could better serve our residents that are already in our system of care, but I would say it's kind of a linear system of care and it should look far more like tree branches going out for a system of care. I was hoping if you could talk a little bit about, you know, part of understanding Director Yasamoto's desire to have had this, not just yesterday, but years ago, and where we're going as we look into the changes that we foresee coming in two to three years, whether it's Care Court, whether it's more prioritization based in the areas of housing, but also really what that integration is going to be. You know, we've talked a lot about CJNET, and that's, you know, I remember arriving and making investments into CJNET. What is the integration with CJNET or are we pivoting from CJNET? And then what, I don't see, I know our district attorney's a little tied up right now, but I don't see the public defender here. And so what is the integration from that side of criminal justice and how that's all going to work? So I asked you a lot of questions, so take your pick.
Well, I'd be happy to answer the questions about CJNET. As a partner in CJNET, again, probation is just one piece of that, so I don't want to speak on behalf of all of my colleagues. However, what I can tell you is that CJNET has been being built by ITS for over 10 years. We are using it in many areas. Juvenile probation has not been developed yet, so we're still looking for that development to happen. And most recently, we did put out a request for information just to look at what the options are around a integrated system with whether or not we should keep a homegrown system, or whether or not we should look to a vendor, what the cost would be, what the implications of that would be. The benefit of CJNET is it's fully customizable, having the resources and the staffing in ITS and development to be able to come into the departments. And as this legislation changes so frequently, we are able to pivot and move as long as we have the resources for the developers in CJNET. We also have a lot of integrations amongst our county departments, but also with the court, and hoping someday to even provide that into our nonprofit world. So we are looking at that currently to see whether or not, moving forward, if we move forward with a data enterprise system also, that is a discussion that we'll need to have and make a decision based on what is in the best needs of the county.
And just to give a little bit of history of, you know, why we built CJNET. We did, and this is many years ago, we did first go out to see what was available on the market vendors, and we went through various demos. We had, you know, criminal justice departments attending those. And what it turned out to be, there was no one whole application that everybody or the departments wanted. I mean, there was like, I want this application or that application. And so we could have gone down that route, but then we still wanted the integration with these systems, so, you know, we had to add another piece to that. And so in looking at that versus, okay, let's develop the system where we have the, we can build that integration and we can integrate to other, like courts, and we also with the city of Napa with their system. So, you know, we, so we went down that road and as Amanda said, you know, we can tailor that system to the business needs. And when we did roll it out and we did this department-to-department, it wasn't just, let's just build the system based on whatever current process, business process was in place. It was, we took the time and, you know, hence it takes a while, we took the time to look at, with the departments, you know, looking at the business practices, how can we improve that? And then building the technology around improved business practices. So that's a little bit of a history of why we have that and, but to Amanda's point, we want to see what's out there. I mean, this has been many years, you know, 10, 12 years ago where we did this, so we want to see what's out there. And if there's a better solution, we'll look at that. If there's something we see that we can, you know, use in CJNET, we'll, we'll look at that too. Got all of your questions?
The next one. When we look at what we know at this moment of Care Court, populations to be served and across multiple agencies, how are we looking with that in mind? Are we looking to meet that and do better? What's, what's kind of our target, right? I mean, of course, understanding that data is important to make fact-based decision-making and truly investments and policy from our perspective to understand where is that investment going to be most fruitful? What are, what are we looking at in terms of, are we looking at other counties, like the first seven that have implemented Care Court, and what their information systems look like and how we can improve upon that? What's going to inform this process?
So I would say the counties, the seven counties that are implementing Care Court are just at the very beginning stages. Different counties do have different data management infrastructure behind them. I will tell you that the counties who have a system and an infrastructure built out will be light-years ahead of the rest of us who don't. I don't think this is because of Care Court. I think this should be happening despite Care Court. I think Care Court just amplifies the need for integration that we've always known we needed. So I, I think the first of the counties just started embarking upon that journey. Of course, we are, let's see, coming up at the end of next year. But, you know, this system won't be implemented by then, but we need this for every human being that walks through our doors. And, you know, I would say I think this is also a matter of just equity. How are we treating and serving those most vulnerable in our population? They have the right to every advantage walking through the door and for us as the servers of them to have that eye in the sky so we can provide the best integrated care without anybody or any service not being provided so people and lives are falling through cracks.
Thank you.
And if I could just give an example-
And if, if I could just give an example of, of clients in common that, that I have just within our department that we can't necessarily see the, all the relevant data. We've got folks who work in ag who seek an emergency shelter bed because they don't have housing. They come into the South Napa Shelter. We work to try and get them into an available bed at the farm worker centers because that's a better transitional housing location. As soon as they leave one system and go to the other, they're unknown to each other. What we would like to do is get folks who are in the farm worker centers into the set aside units at Heritage House when they open up with the Joe Serna funding. Again, that'll be a third system, totally unknown to each other. What we would love to do is eventually also be able to serve that individual and with the proximity home loan program. There is a continuum that we want to be able to bring to those individuals and make sure that they're getting connected to job training services, make sure that they're getting mental health, they might need immigration services, all of that. Some of that is what the county provides, some of that is what our external partners provide. And we just don't have a way to see that system for the individual. So, there's, there's like our system when we talk about like an internal county system, but the system of care is, is the whole network here. And there are so many touchpoints to those individuals. And just the ability to knit those things together, I think, gives us a chance to not just understand better what we're doing and how we connect, but to shorten the line outside the emergency shelter and get it moved up to true prevention. And that's, that's just within the little slice of the county that we serve. So, I think to your question, this, this really is about looking forward. And one of the toughest things to ever do is measure the, the value of prevention. But I think once we get a better integrated story of what we're doing, we can truly start to measure prevention and do some prediction.
Thank you. Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you Chair Ramos. And thanks everyone for being here today and talking us through kind of the vision for the next steps and the clear need for it. So, I'll just start off by saying I'm in full support of the RFP process beginning. And I liked hearing what you were saying, Ms. Javestang, about coming back to the board. And I guess things that I'm interested in learning are, you know, what other counties are doing, you know, who already have those data management systems in place, particularly as you look at the question of you continue with CJNET or do you look for another vendor? And I applaud the decision to keep an open mind about what those possibilities are because as you said, some time has passed and, and it's an area where things sound like they are changing rapidly. So, I'm, I'm interested in how other counties are addressing and solving this problem. I'm also interested in whatever set of vendors you're looking at. One of the questions is also, how is any potential system applicable or help solve the problems of other departments? As you, as you pointed out, you know, we just heard about, or got an update as the GSA about many of the different data points and metrics that we will require here in assessing groundwater. And so it would be great if there was this, you know, just that that's also in mind as you look at what meets the needs of Health and Human Services. And also this idea of just developing kind of a theory of data governance, I think is really important for the whole county. Because, you know, one of the things I'd like to see this system promote more transparency and access, but also at the same time, an awareness of, you know, just what you pointed out, the need for, that some pieces of our data system are going to need to be private. And so how we help our constituents understand theirs, their data is safely stewarded here too. So, I think those are all the comments I had. I, I guess one other piece that I'd like to throw out there, you mentioned the Health Insurance Portability Act. I think we should also have a priority of data portability so that if we get ourselves into a system or work with a vendor over a period of years, that there's always the ability to pull our data out of that and, and move to something else. You know, whether it's working with more, you know, open source based systems or something like that, just making sure that that's a priority for the county moving forward too. Thank you.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Great, thank you. First of all, I'm very supportive of this. Having been on the other side trying to coordinate data between a CBO and a, and the county, I understand the frustration and that what you want to do is really improve the system overall, enhance the services so that you see the outcomes you want to see for, for, for our community. And also if there are ways to reduce costs and leverage funding, you want to do that as well. So, super important and absolutely supportive of that. Is the RFP just for phase one? Or will it be broader and then you will show the phases and say, you know, right now, we're basically looking for someone to help us with this particular phase, but these are the multiple phases that we anticipate?
Yes. So, what we'll do in the RFP, I mean, you know, the first phase will be more detailed out. But with other phases, we will put in there here are additional data needs so that they have the full picture of what the county wants. So, yes, we would, we would have the bigger picture in there.
Great. And I, I think it's important, I think we, I've heard, we've heard this a couple of times, that we make sure that we are including the broader system and not just the county system itself, but the system of care throughout the community so that we can definitely share with CBOs that we contract with to make sure that, you know, we are finding ways to beat that ultimate goal of improving the system itself. So, that's really important as well. And then thinking about the, the strategy that will occur in terms of what we do with that data once, once we have it. You know, we're talking about being siloed in our different, you know, departments and whatnot. And I'm sure there will be ways for, you know, the individual departments to, to utilize that data. But thinking about someone who really holds the, holds the whole system and is able to really analyze that at a systems level and then be able to come to the departments and say, hey, we saw this. Hey, we noticed that. We see that there could be some coordination here or this is an interesting, you know, data point that, you know, looks like a trend or whatever. Just to make sure there's that higher level of the system really seeing itself rather than just seeing only the parts of the system where you reside. Also, I wanted to ask about, so budget. So, I'm just thinking about what is the timeline here? Because we're going into budget season. I think it would be really important to understand what this really looks like before we budget for anything. We want to know, it seems like we, we need to get those responses to the RFP to really get at what the costs look like before we, you know, bake that in. So, wondering a little bit about sort of timing, when you might have a scope of work, you know, how you're going to put the budget together. And I think also just a, a strong recommendation that the users of the system as much as possible drive the creation of what it looks like. And so that means being very involved in the RFP itself. Because we can, you know, IT can look at this from a technical perspective and say, you know, these are all the things that we think we need from a, from a information technology standpoint. But really, you don't get to the good data unless the people who are using the system can get the questions they need answered from the data itself, right? And that kind of drives what the system looks like or what the data system looks like. So, anyway, sorry if I asked you too many things.
Yeah, that's fine. Good questions. So, with the RFP process with a, a, a big system like this, that is going to take time. And, you know, we're looking at releasing here pretty soon the RFP, but then we go through that RFP process. And so, you know, we're probably looking at July timeframe, thereabouts, getting responses back. So, and, and once we have those, and, you know, we always have to go through that, the rate, the ranking or the scoring. So, that will take a little time. However, you know, so when it comes to budget, you know, so obviously, you know, with, with this current budget, you know, we're, you know, we won't have this in the current budget necessarily. Or not current budget, but for the 22, 23 fiscal year budget. So, when, once we get to that point where, you know, the, the money becomes, you know, we need to look at money. You know, the CO, CO's office will recommend a designation of excess ERAF to match the project cost. And, and then, you know, we'll come back to, to the board on what that would look, you know, what the cost is and what that would look like. And then also, you know, there's, there's potential for grant funding. So, we'll pursue grant funding to help fund some of this as well. Did I answer all of your questions? Supervisor Gallagher.
I probably made more comments than had questions. Interested to hear more of the discussion.
Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, appreciate the information and my colleagues' thoughtful comments already. Are we, are we aware of county models? Those that have gone before us and we can learn from? Or are we inventing something here?
Now, there are, are models out there. Jennifer mentioned a county using IBM, that product. So, there's a model there and it's not just that one county. There are other, two other counties that were using that as well. What's interesting is other counties are in various phases of this data conundrum, if you will. And so, it's a topic of our association with the County CIO Association. So, those are, and in fact, there's a, a session on that in our next meetings that we have. So, there's definitely synergies that we can gain from other counties through that association as well as, you know, other associations with, that other department heads go to or are a part of.
The CSAC meets again in a few weeks and at our Board of Directors meeting, I'll kind of throw it out there to see what other counties are doing and see if there's consortium that we put together. So, we're helping each other out. Thank you.
Excellent. I see no other questions from the board. I'll now open public comment. See no public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. The request before us is to authorize the issuance of an RFP to contract with a consultant to develop a platform to consistently collect, manage and govern data.
Move to do that.
Second, second to do that.
Motion by Supervisor Gallagher and second by Supervisor Gregory, the G's got us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much and for bringing this to our attention and really looking forward to how integration leads to honestly better outcomes. Thank you. Next, we will take up item 11D. I will invite the Treasurer-Tax Collector, Bob Minahan, to join us as he is requesting actions regarding changes to the Napa County Investment Pool. First is adoption of a resolution renewing the delegation of investment and reinvestment authority to the Treasurer-Tax Collector, which we do on an annual basis pursuant to Government Code Section 53607 and 2700.1, and approval of the Napa County Statement of Investment Policy in accordance with California Government Code Section 53646A1. Mr. Minahan.
Board, Bob Minahan, Treasurer-Tax Collector. Interesting time to be in front of you. We've had the second and third largest bank failures in the United States. We recently had the Fed Chair raise interest rates to the highest level that they've been in since 2007. And those two issues commingle. And so, we'll go through the delegation of authority, also the investment policy. But if you have any questions regarding our current position as the Treasury, in the Treasury Pool, you know, I'm happy to also address those. So, the first item before you is delegation of authority. This is typically something we put on the consent calendar. This whole item is usually something we put on the consent calendar. But because of the changes to the policy, there are two major changes. We thought we'd discuss it with you and make sure that the Board of Supervisors is in agreement. So, the first item is the delegation of authority. The fiduciary responsibility to invest excess funds of not only the county, but the school districts and the special districts is actually the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors. That fiduciary responsibility can be delegated to the Treasurer. And Napa County has done that for as long as I can remember, since at least 1997 was when we started making the actual resolutions to delegate. The delegation of authority is for a maximum of one year. But if a delegation is made, the Board of Supervisors can rescind that delegation at any point in time. So, that's the first item. The second item is approving the investment policy, which also by Government Code has to come to the board every year. There are two major changes to the investment policy in front of you. The first is Section 7K, which adds supranational obligations to the list of permitted investments. And supranational obligations are being added or requested to be added due to during the pandemic, the federal agencies, which there are four federal bond agencies that are allowed under our current policy. There are Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, the Federal Home Loan Bank and the Federal Farm Credit Bank. Neither Fannie Mae nor Freddie Mac were issuing bonds during the pandemic. And so, the, the Treasury investment pools got pretty concentrated within Farm Fred, Farm, Federal Farm Credit Bank and the Federal Home Loan Bank. Supranationals would give us a diversification opportunity, very highly rated. Supranationals are effectively treaties that are developed between multiple counties or multiple countries, all of which include the United States, all of which the largest shareholder is the United States and all of which are housed in Washington DC. They issue bonds, raising funds for effectively ESG, environmental, social and governance-related bonds throughout the, the entire world. They were the first kind of ESG-specific issuers. And a lot of the ESG programs that have come subsequent to that were based on what the World Bank and supranationals were doing. Supranationals, all supranationals are currently, have a credit rating equal to or higher than US Treasury bills. Most are higher, most are AAA rated. The United States Treasury obligations are currently AA rated. And so, we're looking for inclusion of the supranationals at a maximum of 10% of our portfolio moving forward. This was vetted by our Treasury Oversight Committee, which is comprised of representative from the board, Chair Ramos, a representative from our special districts, which is Supervisor Pedrosa. It also includes your Treasurer-Tax Collector, I mean, your Auditor Controller, former position, former department, Tracy Scholzey, the Superintendent of Schools and a representative from the school districts, K through 14 school districts, as well as a member of the public. So, any questions on supranationals? None? Okay. The second one is more of an exclusionary additions to Section 17 of our policy. And it is, the way I look at it is, it's an extension of initiatives the county has already taken. And we are now streamlining those processes all the way through to the investment policy. So, there are three additions to Section 17 which restrict the Treasury from investing and buying any bonds associated with these industries. The first industry is the fossil fuel industry. The second industry is civilian arms. The second industry is civilian arms, civilian guns and firearms, and as well as ammunition. And the third industry is the tobacco industry, limiting purchases or restricting any purchases of a company that has derives 15% or greater of its sales from the tobacco industry. So those are the three areas that I was able to identify, and I want your thoughts on them. I know I've spoken with a number of supervisors on the issue. I know you all have questions and thoughts directly on this. And so I'm here to answer and try and help navigate us through additions to this policy.
Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, this is a baseline question. I'm not necessarily, and this is on the second part. I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but when did the county take a strategic position or make an initiative on those three things?
Well, you have your greenhouse gas reduction initiatives that ties into the fossil fuel industry. You have outlaw, you've banned gun sales in the unincorporated areas of the county, which leads into your civilian firearms restriction. And then the third, the tobacco, you know, is more in line with Health and Human Services, um, programs and their initiatives.
Thank you.
Supervisor Katrel.
Thank you, and thanks for being here today to walk us through these. First of all, I, I appreciate Supervisor Gregory's question, and I really appreciate your answer because basically what you're saying is, you know, you, you did the talk over here with these other points, and this is the opportunity to walk the walk a little bit. So I appreciate that. So my question is actually, um, I missed the opportunity, but to ask about the, um, the supranationals. So are they by definition ESG funds, or is it just that the current crop happens to be? Or so that's built, that's kind of baked into the entities?
Yes, it, um, that's all they issue. They only issue bonds that they have defined as ESG. ESG is a tricky subject because what we would define as ESG may not be what, um, the supranationals specifically define as ESG, what another county may. But they are, for the most part, they're out, um, funding areas of need in other countries. And it's with these three tenants specifically in mind.
Got it. Thank you. And then just the question on the, you mentioned, they all currently have at least a double A rating and many are triple A. And is that, that again, could change in the future, but is there, I think there's some language in this investment policy that says that we would, the county would be investing in those double A or above?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, the lowest rating they currently have is double A. We probably wouldn't look in that area currently. We're probably looking to only at the triple A rated sections of the supranationals at this point in time.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. Thank you so much for, um, your work, and, um, I'm really supportive of, of these changes. And, and I feel like, um, you heard us. And, um, and also, um, I, I like the way you have, um, essentially, you know, matched the wording in the restrictions, especially to, um, you know, initiatives and other priorities of the board and of the county. And I'm sure there will be opportunities to continue to do that. And so thank you for, um, for looking for those ways to do that, um, whether it's prompted by us or not. So I, I think that's great. And I'm sure that, um, you know, more things may come along, but I'm very, very much in favor of, uh, as Supervisor Katrel said, walking the walk, not just, um, saying we care about these things, but actually, um, putting our money where our mouth is and really saying, you know, we're not going to put our money into, um, these kinds of investments because they ultimately do not reflect the values of the, of the county. So thank you so much for, for doing that.
Excellent, and thank you to, uh, the Treasury Oversight Committee who took, uh, the first look at this. And it was, I think, a great process to be able to have that investment. So you know, there, oh, Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, follow up. Did you, what, what outreach did we do to the entities that are in the pool? The other jurisdictions and bodies?
They're, they're all represented by the Treasury.
Okay, they're all on the group that reviewed this already.
Each segment of the Treasury Pool is represented by someone on the Treasury Oversight Committee.
Okay.
So everything, all investment policy changes first run through the Treasury Oversight Committee. It gets blessed there before coming to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, and then one might wonder or worry about what opportunities we'll miss to, to grow our pool and get a good return. And if that conflicts with, um, the socially oriented policies. But it seems we've only got 0.66% of, of our investment that, that meets this, um, that violates this new policy. Therefore, we're not really, it's not, hasn't been a good investment for us in these, in these ways. We're not missing out.
Right. The, the reality is, these three industries don't issue much debt that would be of interest to the county, whether there were these exclusions or not. And yet we have one current fossil fuel holding, uh, that matures in 2026. We'll hold that to maturity. But, you know, if you look at the civilian firearm industry, there are only two public companies in, you know, the top 200 manufacturers. They don't issue bonds. And so it's not like we're out there. Additionally, we look at safety liquidity before we look at yield. Yield's always the last thing we're trying to achieve, um, only after the first two are, are handled. And when you're looking on the corporate side of things, there really isn't a premium to invest in these other industries. And so whether you're buying, um, you know, bonds for ExxonMobil or you're buying something for Amazon, what really is the critical part is what their rating is. If one's a double A rated bond, the other's a double A rated bond, you're for the most part looking at the same kind of yield. If one's an A and the other's a double A, you may, you may take a little bit less on the double A for the, just for the security side of it.
Thank you. See no other questions from the board. I will now open public comment on both items, which is the delegation of investment and reinvestment authority to the Treasurer-Tax Collector, and also approval of our, um, investment, our Statement of Investment Policy. See no public comment. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for further discussion and decision. It's the only thing standing in between you and lunch. Supervisor Katrel.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution and approve the Napa County Statement of Investment Policy. Second.
Excellent. We have a, we have a motion by Supervisor Katrel, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Chair, do you have any questions regarding the state of our current situation? As we're sitting in, you know, seeing a couple of banks, um, go down and rising interest rate environment? If I can just, for just a second, talk about our Treasury Pool. Our Treasury Pool is very much like a bank. It's a little easier for us because our, um, depositors are required to do so by law. And so you're not going to see a massive run on the Bank of Napa County Treasury. So with that said, I go back to safety and liquidity are first and second priorities with, for me, liquidity being the highest one because exactly what you're seeing. We need to be able to have enough funds available on a daily basis to meet the requirements of not only the county, but also the school, K through 14 school districts and the special districts. Right now, the Fed has moved rates from basically zero to five in a 12-month period, which is huge. So every investment pool in the United States, every governmental investment pool in the United States has an unrealized loss, including Napa County's. We will never realize that loss because we have sufficient cash flow available and sufficient liquidity that we're never going to have to be in a, put in a position where we have to sell our bonds at a loss. And if you look at Silicon Valley Bank, they did not have the liquidity requirements that they needed. Rumor got out, and welcome to the world of the internet, um, and you had a, you had a real major run on a bank. People were pulling $40 billion out of that bank at a crack. They had $200 billion of unrealized losses, and they did not have the liquidity to meet, um, the demands of their depositors. And so as fun, funds are coming out, they simply ran out of money and were having to sell everything off in order to make at least some of their, we're not in that position. We will never be in that position. We will always lean on being over liquid, uh, which may cost us a little bit on the yield side. But I think it is, it will always be the right choice for our county. We look at the cash flows for not only the county, but the special districts and the schools, and we try to match bond maturities with those cash flows. And so at any point in time, not only do we have funds set aside for our unexpected kind of transactions, but we also have funds that are targeted specifically to our known large cash flow dates. And so from that point, you know, I don't think we'll ever be in a significant issue like these banks are facing.
Thank you. Um, you know, and I really, I do appreciate, we had this discussion at the Treasury Oversight Committee of just that, really ensuring that, that liquidity. And I think it really highlights the importance of the Treasury and, and who the depositors of the Treasury are. We're about 50%, the county, us over here are about 50% of the Treasury overall. But the Treasury, serving as the bank, is the one that's needing to make sure that everyone else can meet their withdrawals. But more importantly, if they're not able to meet those withdrawals, that that loaning is facilitated by the Treasury. And that comes from whether it's, uh, the school district, whether it's the college in the past, um, or even some of the cities. So I, I really appreciate the focus on that liquidity. But for us to also understand that we have that investment obligation for those beyond this, this county, the, the big C, but to also our depositors. So thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We do not have any set matters or public hearings for special districts. We do not have set matters or public hearings for the county itself. Anything for the Legislative Committee? Any updates? Supervisor Katrel.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to go over, um, a couple of things. We met yesterday and reviewed several bills that were within the legislative platform. We voted to support four of them and oppose one of them. Two of them are, were outside the scope of the legislative platform, and they'll be coming to the full board, um, in the next few weeks, I think. We also heard about the request that went to our congressional representatives. We sent three that the county sent out. One was on, uh, Old Howe Mountain Road. The second was on, was drainage improvements on 29, fronting the Hess property. And the third and largest one was, uh, for North Berryessa Resort Improvement District wastewater treatment improvement. So Supervisor Gregory, anything else from that meeting you want to share?
You nailed it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'll ask for any committee reports or announcements. Supervisor Gallagher.
Just a follow-up to the Backman decision. We did approve the rule changes, um, which will ban the sales of NOx emitting appliances, i.e. furnaces and water heaters, uh, throughout the Bay Area. This is a phased approach, as I said, um, starting in 2027. There is a, uh, robust cross-sector working group that will be, um, looking at the implementation. And, um, I'm trying to keep up with, um, questions from residents. So let me know if you have any, uh, anyone who has concerns or is asking questions, um, so we can maybe coordinate some responses. There is a good FAQ on Backman's website, and, um, I'm looking at how we might, um, add to that so that we can, um, address, you know, concerns of our particular, um, residents here in Napa County. But that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, attended my first MURN Clean Energy Board meeting last week, and, um, thankfully it was, uh, their fiscal year is a little strange. It's, um, April to, uh, March. Thank you. So I was able to, uh, my first meeting, sit in on the budget and review it and, and approve it. And it was just a great way to orient as a new board member. But they have, um, it's a billion-dollar organization. It's huge. It's, you know, bigger than I thought it was, a billion-dollar organization. And they currently have 200 million in banks, so we're watching this issue very carefully. But it's a great organization, always looking to protect more energy providers, and it's really cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, as your representative, um, to, to ABAG, a very, a position I'm very grateful to hold as I do have a leadership position. I have the opportunity to sit on the Finance Committee for ABAG. And, um, ABAG is, is interesting in that it no longer has employees. As we went through a staff consolidation, we haven't gone through a governance consolidation, but we went through a staff consolidation. Imagine having unfunded pension obligations for employees you no longer have. And that's where we're at. There is nothing, um, less interesting in terms of, and desirable of having to owe $11.8 million as the 2021 valuation, and you don't have a single employee. So we need to see our way out of this, and we are exploring options. And I, I must say, you know, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Minahan isn't in the, in the room here, but he came to us years ago with the 115 trust idea. And when we were, we were approached with this deficit, the structural deficit, and how we were going to try and beat the CalPERS numbers, right? It's a very real to us. CalPERS is always, it's kind of like our water, annual water report. It's kind of always behind and not quite reflective of what's going on. CalPERS is the same thing. And knowing that CalPERS has experienced losses and we're not going to be charged on the back end, we won't see it for two years, we need to be prepared for that. So, um, I was able to share our success on the 115 trust. And I am happy to report that the ABAG Executive Board, um, embarked on an exploration of the 115 trust. We're also looking at other options, um, which, uh, may or may not include a loan from, uh, MTC. So, uh, I will, uh, get the opportunity to negotiate with Supervisor Pedrosa and his capacity as Chair to, uh, throw some money this way so we can really, um, we can structuralize this deficit in a way that's going to be able to get us ahead. And I say this because, um, you know, we have ABAG dues. They're going to increase. They have to increase. But I want to, I, I want to preface that with saying, when that increase comes before us, understand this is work that has already been done on behalf of the counties through ABAG. And it's work that's going to continue to be done, uh, by ABAG. But those obligations, it's no different than those, uh, employees that we have here that have already retired and that we owe obligations on. I am committed to, to making this work as, as best as possible, but it is going to require buy-in from our, our member agencies. And, um, it's, it's, I, I get a talk pension a whole lot more now. So, thank you. Uh, Supervisor Katrel.
Thanks. That's great to hear that you were able to bring that Napa County experience back to them. I wanted to add one thing that was, um, I had a Zoom call with Senator Dodd's staff and, uh, former Assemblyman Roger Dickinson, and also Supervisor Lucas Ferrex from Yolo County, talking about Senator Dodd's, um, legislation on the climate resiliency districts. Just another mechanism for, um, helping jurisdictions fund climate work. That, the idea being that we're, particularly in this granting world, if a county needs to provide a source of local funding, that's the way to do it, and they would stand up similar to the enhanced infrastructure districts. So just something for us to think about as we look at, um, trying to fund fire projects, you know, potential groundwater recharge projects or something like that. So it seems like a flexible option, um, but it was nice to get that introduction.
Thank you. Um, next, future, um, agenda items. Thank you. Next, future agenda items. I do have one, and it came up today during public comment, and it was about participation by staff in non-county-sponsored forums. And, you know, I think really, we're a large enough organization and with many requests for staff time, I think it would be prudent for us as we're looking at our policies overall through our strategic visioning process, that this would be one that we could also incorporate. So not an urgency in the sense, but to really be able to have some parameters by which we can guide our staff and our department heads on how to value staff participation at forums in the future. So I'll add that up. Supervisor Gallagher?
Thank you. I'd also like to respond to concerns from the public around having additional opportunities to engage and access our public meetings, i.e. mostly through public comment. And so having a chance to discuss ways that we can actually enhance those options and, you know, meet the needs of our constituents.
Okay. Seeing no others. Mr. CEO, any reports or announcements?
None, other than just to say that we'll be coming back with a proposal to begin the strategic plan update process to the Board on April 18th, and have that discussion when the Board, when the full Board is constituted again. So, thank you.
Excellent. We do not have the need for closed session. At this time, we will adjourn to our next Board of Supervisors regular meeting, Tuesday, April 4, 2023, 9:00 AM. Thank you.
With Chair Gallagher at that meeting.